I'd like to call this meeting on Monday, November 27th to order. First item is the adoption of the agenda. A recommendation that council adopted November 27, 2017, regular meeting agenda as presented, Councilor Prag, Councilor Ross. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Moving on to the minutes. We have a motion to adopt on November 14th, committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented. Mover please. Council Tripp, Council Butler. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Adoption of the regular meeting minutes of November 14th as presented. Mover please. Councilor Ross, Councilor Thompson.
What? Just one. It's changing.
Go ahead.
Yes, Councilor Neil Prag is absent and it's not working here.
What? Are you sure I wasn't there?
No, you were. You were competing.
Oh. Councilor Tripp?
Yes, I just had one housekeeping meeting on Sunday. The name is completion. It's Lori Bloodwater.
Did we get that? Next one. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Okay, moving on to petitions and delegations, item 4A. Subject matter is proposed implementation of city block watch coordinator and program. Sergeant Jim Fenske of the Grand Forks RCMP, present to speak as delegation. Chief Administrative Officer, presentation of report. Recommendation is, the council received a delegation from Sergeant Jim Fenske along with staff presentation regarding the proposed city block watch coordinator and watch program. Mover please. Councilor Ross, Councilor Butler. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Just to give a bit of background before we get started on it, block watch would be a pre-RCNP endorsed community program operated by the City of Grand Forks Bylaw Services Department. The Bylaw Services Office will implement, coordinate, and monitor the effective block watch program in the City of Grand Forks. Citizens in the community are responsible for organizing, operating, and maintaining the block watch program in their neighborhoods. And the goals are for the community to become actively involved in crime prevention in their community, reduction in crime in the community, increase the community response reporting suspicious activities to police, and promote community awareness, community pride. It operates on the idea that police cannot be everywhere. Police require assistance in the community to effectively prevent, reduce, and investigate crime in the community. It allows these citizens to be active in crime prevention by identifying and reporting all suspicious activities in their community. Block watch can only be successful if the majority of the community is actively involved. The more people involved in block watch, the more successful the program. The block watch program, or Block Watch Society in DCS, promoter program is designed to fight isolation and separation that crime creates and feeds on. Program forges bonds among area residents while helping reduce burglaries and other crime. The design improves relations between the police and the community that they serve. I'm not going to bother going into the history of the block watch. There's quite a good sense of history going back to 1986. I will say that it has been very effective in many other communities. The president of the Block Watch Society is in a neighboring community of Vernon. I've been in touch with him quite extensively.
Sergeant Fenske?
Thanks Bud. Bud approached me about this program about two weeks ago, I guess, when it kind of ball rolling. So I reached out to our community policing member, which is Corporal Nelson Detachment, because quite frankly, the block watch thing was a little bit foreign to me. And I've given you each an information package to research. It's a lot of information to digest, but essentially, the program breaks into increasing the relationship between the police and the community members, and making sure that we have a safer community. So it's the bare bones of it. Bud has spoken to, you know, the implementation of the program isn't overly extensive. It's basically recruiting volunteers, captains and co-captains, providing addresses, and essentially engaging the program coordinator to liaise with the police in terms of problem areas and items of concern. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that we do have functioning citizens on patrol program currently in the City of Grand Forks. Now, implementing both, we're certainly not opposed to that, but I think that we need to make sure that we're working together and not adversarially when it comes to this thing with these programs. Like Bud said, it goes back to Seattle. 1986 is when it was started. There's been excellent results in some communities, and some communities, not so much. But I think that boils down to how the program was implemented. Traditionally, there has been a tendency for middle income, middle to middle high income people to implement the block watch program to ensure their block is safe where there is no crime. So really, you kind of have to maneuver it to suit your community. And the program certainly does allow for a lot of flexibility. You can essentially, you can essentially maneuver it the way you want. So we're certainly not opposed to it. Anytime we have the community on our side is a good thing. So really, it can't hurt. I think it's a good program, and I think moving forward, it's a great idea. It certainly would assist us with specifically property crime is what we're targeting in here with the block watch program. That would be residential break-in enters, break-in enters to sheds, carports, vehicles, that kind of thing, and businesses would be specific, kind of the mission specific of the block watch program. Other than that, there is information packages to review when you have more time, but it is a program that's supported by myself, and it's also supported by E-Division, which is the province of British Columbia, in terms of engaging the community and reducing crime.
I have a question. You mentioned the citizens on patrol. Has there ever been any consideration given for a form of an overlap with the two organizations? Has there been any discussion, like, where citizens patrol instead of like being, like you said, posing one another, or more so of an overlap where it would work together?
Well, I think the issue would be is how it's implemented, because citizens on patrol is a roving unit, and these, block watch is more of a static kind of, yeah, we're going to keep our blocks safe. But like I say, if you do read it, there's a lot of flexibility here. I know the citizens on patrol program functions well. They need volunteers. They're short. And they're, we're really trying to maneuver the program to put them on the streets where they would be at the most affected times. And the problem is, is they only have so many volunteers, and a lot of them are retired folk, and we need to kind of tweak it, but I think that it would work in conjunction with block watch quite well.
Yeah, like the awareness factor of the speaking.
Exactly. Sergeant Fenske and I have discussed this, and quite fully, Sergeant Gordon and discussed it as well.
Yep. Perfect. Councilor Tripp?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Sorry about that. Yeah, I think that the block watch program sounds excellent and would work pretty well with the citizens on patrol. I don't see the two groups competing with each other in terms of your volunteer efforts. I think you'd probably be looking at very different groups of people who would be interested in going out, you know, in the middle of the night to do that kind of patrol thing as opposed to those in their neighborhood who would be able to, or willing to take responsibility for getting things organized in, you know, in their particular neighborhood. I know Councilor Hammett here has had a lot of experience with organizing block watch down in Suri, and maybe it would be good, you know, to hear from you just a little bit if you'd be willing to explain a bit about what happened there. But yeah, the other, I guess one question that I had was how do you see the relevant information coming from, say, a block watch captain or whatever? They found out something got stolen from somebody's house, or there was a break-in or whatever, when someone wasn't home? How do you see that information getting passed on to the RCMP and then culminating in some kind of reduction in crime?
I think one of the key components of the block watch program is education and prevention. And the fancy term they're using here is target hardening, which means make your place harder to break into than the place down the street. I'm honest with you. So I think the education component is crucial, because a lot of times, we recover a ton of property that we believe has been stolen, but there's no way to prove who actually owns it, so it goes in the dump. Or we donate it to where, like, the bikes go to the school for the kids to work on, fix up, and sell for fundraisers. But for example, cordless drills and power tools and all that, without that, any being unique identifiers or a serial number recorded somewhere, we can't actually prove who owns it. And that's part of this program. If you look in there, really, the investment required from the city is fairly minimal, except for the coordinator of the program. This is not going to be a minor task. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. One of them things is, one of the key issues is that block watch goes along and puts unique identifiers on high value items. Or, you know, makes it harder. They'll go and say, that lock you have there is a $1 lock. I can break into it with a screwdriver. Maybe get a $25 lock. And that's part of the program. And really, it's organizing, recruiting, and monitoring is essentially the coordinator role.
Councilor Ross?
Thank you very much. Actually, this is really good timing, because it dovetails perfectly with something that we talked about last week, which was building a safer and secure, more secure Grand Forks. And last, last time we met, we actually struck a organizing committee just to put on exactly that event, which is now slated for December 14th, which is a Thursday evening between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00. And you're both on the speakers list. And one of the, and this is, this is an opportunity for recruiting, Bud. And it may be an opportunity for a sign-up list for people who are at that event, and we're anticipating now approximately 200 people in the community will show up to that event at Curly Gym between 6:00 and 8:00. And that, there is an opportunity for them to sign up, and perhaps by then, you will have an idea of when you actually want to have a introductory evening, a workshop, to start to unfold what that's going to look like in the City of Grand Forks and the surrounding rural areas. So just something to think about. We're going to send you a formal invitation within the next couple of days, but we've just confirmed the time and date, which is on your calendar, the 14th of December, between 6:00 and 8:00 at Curly.
Or send a representative.
Or send a representative. And it's a, it's a community dialogue. It's a dialogue.
Councilor Hammett?
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's a great idea. I brought it up at the community meeting on November the 3rd, that one way for people to protect themselves was to initiate a neighborhood block watch. I've been involved in both block watch and citizens on patrol in Suri, as Councilor Tripp indicated. I was involved for five years. I was an area coordinator for Newton. And at that time, and this is in the, through the 90s, late 80s and 90s, it was run out of the Suri detachment, and this is where the files were kept, and I had 24-hour access so I could go in and update files or follow up. I'm just wondering, now you're talking about it being a bylaw issue from the city, not as an RCMP initiative? So is that something that's changed over the years, or is that just for our community that it would be, belonged to the city and not the RCMP?
That, I think that changed quite a few years ago. The reality, these programs are now managed by the city in every instance I've looked into. I think that has to do with keeping the police resources where they need to be, and making sure that it doesn't become an onerous task for the detachment. So every community I've looked into, and I don't know if I can verify this, it is managed by city, a city employee or a district employee.
If I could add to that, in fact, the, the program in Vernon is run by Reagan Barosanko, who is an employee of the city in the city's crime prevention unit.
The city has a crime prevention?
That is correct.
Okay. So as a follow-up, how things worked before, and we were able to deter and catch a lot of criminals in Suri. If somebody, we had, we had maps of everybody on the street. Like, everybody on that street had a map of the street, everybody's house address, who lived in that house. We had block watch meetings where everybody got to know whose kids were whose, who drove what car, and the hours that they would typically be home. So we were able to keep an eye out and monitor the whole street. If somebody saw something irregular, and if it was something in prime progress, of course, the police were the first people called. Second person was the captain. The captain then got on the phone and called everybody. And it was a fan-out. That went through to the block watch office, who had electronic fan-out to everybody within that zone. So I'm just wondering how that communication would work now? I know with Facebook, you know, things have changed a lot now, so it can all be put through on Facebook immediately. But I'm just wondering, how does that, and who would initiate that communication to that whole area? Say Ruckel had, I don't know how many streets they have in Ruckel, but each street set up a block watch, and say they had 10 block watch captains in block watch streets, and there was some activity happening down there. How would the fastest way to communicate to all of those members be if there was an essential location to do that communication?
Mr. Mayor, through you, to Councilor Hammett, those are logistics that have not worked out yet. They'll refer to consultation with the Block Watch Society, and getting some more samples and so on. I do have one captain's training PowerPoint presentation. That's the only material I've received so far until such time as I've been registered with the Block Watch Society. Once I've been registered with the Block Watch Society, now I'll receive the rest of the material that is necessary to set up the program and run it effectively.
But you're clearly on the right track. Not much of that has changed.
Yeah.
It's just the way the information gets shared.
Right.
But it's still, that's part of the program. And it's in the back, a couple sheets of paper it's referred to there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through Mr. Alcock. I'm just wondering, what's our next steps in this process? Like, for you specifically, maybe what are your next three steps that you're going to be doing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Butler. My next step, of course, would be getting registered with the society on behalf of the city, and there's a small fee, then a script fee. Following that would be the recruitment of captains and co-captains, and then having them get their criminal records checks and security terms. Following that would be them going out and recruiting in their neighborhoods, but also the training of the captains and co-captains. It's a fairly, fairly lengthy process in terms of time. I'm probably looking at not seem totally running and effective for probably three months, possibly more.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just curious, how do you plan on recruiting?
At our event on December 14th?
Other than that, of course.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of it's going to be word of mouth. A lot of it's going to be door knocking. A light, I'm going to suggest that we probably start a Grand Forks block watch page on Facebook, this sort of thing. There, but we will be looking at putting ads in the newspaper as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Carry it, no? Thank you, gentlemen. Very good.
Yeah, thanks for initiating.
Thank you. All those in favor, you received. Anyone opposed? So carry. As a secondary resolution, recommendation is council provides approval for the City of Grand Forks bylaw officer, Mr. Bud Alcock, to become the block watch coordinator for the block watch program for the City of Grand Forks. Mover please. Councilor Hammett, Councilor Ross, Councilor Prag. Only if he wants to. I'll say it.
Yeah, but this is actually a complete resolution and further resolve.
Yeah, and as a follow-up. And further resolve that council approves of the approximate funding in the amount of $1,000 approximately for additional hours to facilitate this program for the setting up of the block watch program and for the coordinator's role for the balance of the year 2017, and the acknowledgement that these funds are available within the current bylaw enforcement budget through 2017. So, a mover, bud? Do we still have the same movers?
Yeah. Can I speak to you?
Your quiet, Councilor Ross.
Just a matter of housekeeping, and I guess, oh, amendments are firmly here, but is I never like the word approximately attached to a funding when we're talking about funding. In the amount of $1,000, we'll stop. I just don't like the word approximately in there, because $1,500 is approximately $1,000. So do we want to say in the amount of $1,000 not exceeding $1,200? Or why don't you just say not exceeding $1,200?
Your worship.
Your worship, yeah, the, trying to figure out the approximate funding is, was a real tough deal, because we don't know exactly how many hours it's going to take, you know, between putting it together and that. So we really don't know, like, it could be 11, it could be 12, it could be maybe 15. We don't really think it's going to go huge, but, you know, maybe council would want to say up to, up to maximum, or up to 2,000 or something, just to make sure it's covered. And so all of a sudden, yeah, all of a sudden, we end up, you know, with something that we have to do. Like, there's, there's also pieces in there where we have to maybe provide some advertising material, coffee and that. We don't really have an idea of how, how large this is until we actually get going, so we just wanted to put some kind of a ballpark figure out there that, that is going to be manageable.
Okay, so, hold on.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, but this reads that it's basically for the hours to facilitate this program. It doesn't talk to anything about the, you know, rental, or advertisement, or recruiting fees. So is that embedded in this?
Your worship, so this is basically for 2017, and of course, the budgeting process is going to include for 2018 extra stuff. So we try to put in a mouth, because we're already, the end of November, we only have one month for 2017, and then we're going into 2018. So we just want to make sure the base is recovered, and we anticipate that most of this would be, would be basically the hours, because it's going to take more hours for Mr. Alcock to get this started than once you get it running and that. And so, you know, we're just trying to get some kind of a figure.
So why would we not, instead of saying $1,000 approximately, why would we just not use a figure and say a cap of maximum, cap of, let's say, $2,000?
Counsel can.
Right? I mean, if it's less, then that's fine, but at this point in time, we do have, instead of saying 1,000, then we have a massive overrun of another thousand. So put it at a cap of 2,000.
I'm with the amendment.
Councilor Thompson first, before we go, yeah? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Talking about this resolution, instead of putting for additional hours to facilitate, I would leave all of that out, and just say that further resolve to approve the funding of $1,000 for 2017. For setting up the block watch program. Whatever, but I mean, additional hours and all that, I don't think is relevant to the motion.
So we eliminate the word approximate funding and just say for the funding?
I can tell you what it might want to say.
Go ahead.
Okay, and further resolve to approve of the, of the funding in the amount of and not exceeding $2,000 to facilitate the pro, the setting up of the block watch program. Yeah. I'll second your amendment. You might want to add for the balance of the year 2017.
Yeah, exactly. That part should stay in.
Yeah, as well.
Okay, all those in favor?
There's no other discussion?
Oh, discussion, go ahead, Councilor Hammett.
So that means if we bump it up to $2,000 with about one month left, so in January, we could potentially be looking at a request for more funding? Yeah. Doesn't mean he's going to use it all, because it's to a maximum of $2,000.
Your worship, when staff puts together the operating budget for the 2018, the pieces for the block watch program would be entered in at that point in time, so, you know, staff will have a little bit better idea as to the amount of cost to undertake, and also, of course, we're going to be, you know, giving, you know, any kind of services like photocopying and different things, so, you know, I think that that would be part of it. So that would be basically built into the funding for the next year.
Yeah. I think at this point in time, I think the main intent here is to get the program going. So I mean, if we're going to harden the nickel and dimon here, I think this is ridiculous, so let's just get the program going.
So the way it's worded now, it covers the additional hours, it covers any administration fee, advertising.
Pretty much everything.
I think he's going to have his first meeting between now and next year, then it's going to cover that as well.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
Yeah, what are we voting on?
The amendment.
The amendment?
Yeah. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right.
So do we vote on the main motion as amended?
I just said the amended motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, moving on to item, there's no unfinished business, so moving on to item 6A, written reports of council. The recommendation is that, the written reports of council submitted to the November 30th, 2017 regular meeting be received. The vice president, Senator Thompson.
I didn't know you did.
November 30th. Just a little note, submitted on November 27th, not November 30th. We don't have a meeting on the 30th.
I do.
We can have one if you want.
There you go.
All right?
Obviously watching.
I'll read it out as I see it. Submitted to November 27, 2017, regular meeting be received. Mover please. Councilor Ross, Councilor Butler. Any discussion? Councilor Thompson?
Yes, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the last paragraph in my report with respect to the water meter rates. Can we add that to the November 14th committee of the whole meeting? Or can we just have a separate December?
We can't add it.
No, I'm not trying to move that. I really want to move forward here. To, to, or the December, the 11th, committee of the whole, or just a workshop to discuss Thanks to Fred Scott, who sent both Councilor Tripp and myself an email in this regard. We've been dallying around with this for too many years. Let's, we were likely to make a decision, let's face it, let's move forward with the meter rates. And I really want to have a discussion and have staff have an opportunity to really think about it, and come up with some, some suggestions as well. This really dallying with, I mean, we've had the meter, we've had the meter readings on our utility bills, I think for the last year, better part of it. So people can just go back and check what their consumption is. And if we have a, establish a rate, then they can figure out on their own what they've used in the summer of the, of the last, this past year, and what it would cost them if they didn't make changes. And I really, I mean, I'm hearing this from, from a lot of people, like, wouldn't you guys do it? So I would, I really would like us to move forward on this, sooner or later.
So with all due respect, am I understanding you're rescinding your thoughts on the two-year block building?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. It's his fault.
Okay. Time to say that. Councilor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I just want to respond to that as well, as my, as my name was infamously brought up there, as having also received that letter. Actually, what I had suggested to staff was that Mr. Scott's situation there over there at the apartment be dealt with immediately. And I was told that because a former council made the decision to, to go ahead and deal with it the way that they did, that it would have to fall back under, you know, what the current council of the day's decision is regarding the, the water rates. So I feel like I'm absolved of making any kind of decision based on what Mr. Scott wants. I, I felt his situation was a one-off. It should have been dealt with. It's a, it's a unique situation, and I still hope that the city can deal with it, no matter what we decide in terms of whether it be immediately 12 months, 24 months, or whatever.
So Councilor Thompson, you proposing a notice of motion?
Yes, I am.
For one year?
No, I'm just going to, my motion is going to be that we proceed with the implementation of water metered rates effective January 1st, 2018.
So you're planning to launch the program?
Well, that's a big change. Return him to the table.
I, I, I know. I know I changed my mind and.
She can't, well, notice of motion doesn't go forward till next meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but, but the next meeting, the, the next meeting is, is on the December the 11th. It's when I am proposing that this issue be placed on the agenda for discussion. And I will add that I want to give notice of motion.
Thank you.
Your worship, just so the councils aware, of course, they, they can choose to implement the services sooner. Council also have to remember though, that we do have to go through a bylaw process. And so with an introduction at the Committee of the Whole, we would still have to go into the new year in order to get the bylaw in place. And so we couldn't effectively say that we would be running a program starting January 1st because you can't backdate a bylaw. You have to make sure that your bylaw is passed before you can actually implement any rates. And so, you know, I guess at the quickest you would have, you can actually present the first three readings. But I don't forget if we can get the bylaw in time for that, we might be doing the introduction in January and then do first three readings and final reading. So you might be looking around the beginning part of February at the basis that we could get, so just, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Crook, or you have your hand first to the panel. Go ahead.
Well, okay, I, I hear what you're saying. But with the, with the, the bills don't go up January 11th to March, right? The, the utility bills, because they're, they're bimonthly. So is there an issue? If the, if the bylaw is adopted at the end of January to be effective January 1st, the first year, would it be?
Your worship, you'd have to progress because you can't back, backdate the bylaws. So you can't have a bylaw and say that it's effective behind it. You always have to.
Retrograde.
Counsel is also aware that we do have an RFD with regard to water rates tonight. So we could generate a little bit further discussion as to how council would like to see that. And then we could get the direction from council at that point and then, because it's always on, on the agenda, so.
So is my, is my notice of motion redundant?
Oh, it's premature.
Is it premature?
That's true.
It's redundant down there.
Premature.
It's too late. Don't redo it.
Well, we get, we get the message.
We understand what you mean.
Okay.
Picked on you.
Counselor Ross.
I'm just, is it time to put my motion on the table?
No, you haven't. Oh, okay, mine is. You're premature.
That's, I am premature. But I'm not redundant.
Do you have a mover and seconder on?
So I'm going to call the question of receipt of the reports. Okay, all those in favor? Oh, Counselor Crook, you had, you had something you wanted to add?
Oh, just that.
Probably redundant and premature.
But that's okay, because it's new to me. Because I just thought of it.
Flatter.
Yeah, two years, too long. Right now, too soon, doesn't give people a chance to, so one year is where I thought she was going. Okay? That's all I wanted to say.
You're debating a motion that's not even.
Yeah, exactly.
That's how skilled.
That's premature.
We're flatter. All right, all those in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. Moving on to our second part of that council report is the recommendation that council implements the action checklist.
No, your report.
No.
No. No, no, no.
Oh!
All right, Counselor. The action checklist as provided by Citizens for Safe Technology, Section 5 microcells, municipal rights and responsibilities regarding the placement of microcells on city infrastructure. Mover please. Counselor Tripp, Counselor Butler. Discussion, Counselor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. And as you all know, I've, I've brought this forward and of course, was very pleased that our Microsoft placement consultation resolution got passed at the UDCM. And as a result of that, Citizens for Safe Technology sent us, actually they sent all councils throughout the entire province of B.C., this notice of wireless harm. And we do have a, a letter here today from Karen Bond. She sent that, that today and I see that she's here tonight. And I, I just wanted to, to read it because Karen isn't coming at this as a lawyer, which we know she is. She's just coming at it as a concerned citizen. And what she says in her letter here is Citizens for Safe Technology recently sent a notice of wireless harm to mayor and councillors of the city of Grand Forks regarding potential liability in connection with damage and/or injuries sustained due to placement of microcell installations on city infrastructure. She says she can't just speak to this other, other than in any capacity as concerned citizen. However, she said Citizens for Safe Technology has also provided an action checklist. And this action checklist that the, that this organization has presented us is really, I think that the city is also, is already implementing a number of, of the actions that are on this checklist. And I just really believe that it would be prudent for the city to just complete that checklist and just take action on the things that they aren't already doing. I don't think that it is going to be terribly onerous to do that. But what it does is it gets, it gets the city right up to speed on the level of, the level of the law that's out there, the level of the, the policies that are actually out there already from the FCM and other, and other organizations, the government, actually the government policies. She asked, she says tonight, at tonight's council meeting, you'll be asked to vote on this and about this action checklist. I urge you as concerned residents to pass the resolution on behalf of all our community members and most particularly, who have little children, the elderly, the disabled and others who can't speak for themselves. And she says at the very least, you'll be able to say that you actively sought to protect the community to the best of your abilities. And that's why I'm asking that this action checklist be voted on favorably by the rest of council. I believe that shows that we are being responsible and that we have taken what has been presented to us seriously.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah, thanks. I think I see staff trying to look for the checklist and I don't think it was included on this report. I'm just wondering if we can pull up.
It was from, yeah.
The checklist from the previous meeting so that council can have it on the screen to look at the specific asks because I don't think they're particularly onerous, they're just preventative. And I don't think they're too difficult to implement considering contracts that were already engaged in.
Yeah, there is.
I have a concern on that topic, but we'll hurry back to the CIO.
Your worship, just, I don't know if I'd call it a word of caution, but I would say that there are a lot of municipalities that have pre-existing agreements with large communication companies. And I think that council did put and have done their job already in the fact that they, they passed a resolution at this table. They've taken to the AKBLG, which has gone to the UDCM and now it's sitting at the FCM's table at the federal level. It will be their job to determine that anything for case studies that, that, that have proven effects that there is, and I'm sure that there, they will find some things.
It's an agenda.
You know, that's, that's why they do those studies. And I think that maybe running a task list might be a bit premature. I believe that something like this would likely be coming as a result of what FCM and possibly talks with the CRTC would actually implement. And I would see that, you know, at some point in time, that that piece would likely come back to municipalities as far as a task list. I think that we're kind of, we're, we're digressing back out of our realm again as far as municipality goes. But I think the council has our temporary job.
Yeah, I think the higher levels of government will address this issue first. And this report, is this out of Canada or is this a U.S. report again? I ask that same question.
This is out of Canada. This, this.
I noticed California and Piedmont, California, so is it?
Yes, that was the letter that I attached. Because they're, they're further ahead of the curve than we are in terms of, of placement of the microcells. But if I may just, just speak to just a couple of points that the CIO has made.
I'm sorry, Mike Fox.
Thank you. Yeah, I understand that you're, you're thinking that once maybe that legislation that tightens up the loophole for the placement of microcells within 100 meters of schools and residences and hospitals comes back, that then we may be wanting to move into, you know, looking at this action checklist. But, but in all honesty and all fact, this action checklist, it was taken from the Canadian Wireless Telecommunications Association document with the FCM that already gives the protocol for, for what communities can do in terms of, of setting up agreements and, and what rights they have. So we're not overstepping anything that isn't already in legal documents that are supposed to govern how municipalities put into place of these kinds of contracts. So many municipalities have decided not to implement these measures. They've maybe let things go at a much more lenient level, if you want to say that. But these are things that we are absolutely able to do according to the templates and protocols that are in place. So I'm not asking for anything more nor, or the Canadians for Safe Technology, asking for anything more than other, other than what is already in place.
Is there any case law in place in Canada?
Well, these are the documents that are supposed to govern.
No, but are there any case law in Canada yet?
In, in terms of, of wireless harm? No, there isn't anything yet. There isn't law in others, in other countries in the world, but not in Canada.
Yeah, but we live in Canada, sorry.
Yeah.
Counselor Crook?
Sorry. A lot of the, the references to legislation and what's required and everything has to do with cell tower siting, right? And even the letter that was attached to the report has to do with California and they blur the lines between everything from micro to full, full cell towers. We do have regulations, legislation, everything to do with siting of cell towers, right? That's what we're looking at. There's nothing to do with, from the government, to my knowledge, it has to do with microcell towers. And that's why we put that thing forward was once it goes to FCM and they talk to the federal government, then it comes back and says, yes, these are the things that you have to do, these are the things that you're supposed to do, right? That could take five minutes of staff time, that could take 50 hours of staff time, right? I'm assuming it's not going to be five minutes, I'm assuming it's not going to be 50 hours. And we've already got our microcells. So I look at the list and most of it doesn't apply to us as a city of Grand Forks. So, yeah.
Last time, this is three.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Just, just in response to some of that, the technology has changed and what's happening is that microcells are being put on existing structures. And so what they are is they're mini cell towers and they're being put on existing structures. So we're looking at a change in the technology where the cell tower is no longer necessary and they're putting these microcells on existing structures. So that's one thing. And then the other thing is I, I would like to ask Ms. Reed exactly what we are doing in terms of these, these actual actions already. Because I, I'm sure that we do have something in place with, with, it's probably TELUS and, and the installation of the microcells already in town.
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I missed the, just the beginning part of that question, sorry.
Just, just asking, how much of this is already in place in terms of what your dealings with them?
So we do have an agreement with TELUS for microcells. There's four microcell towers in the city of Grand Forks right now. We have safe work procedures and the data that they've given us to work around.
So, so the safeguard procedures are in place from, from, from the organization that's installed them?
For our department to work around, yes.
Exactly. So, and until such time, again, if there's any case law or government regulations contradicting those safeguards, we have nothing at this point, other than the fact that everything is okay. Am I right?
Currently, we follow those safeguards and feel comfortable.
Those guidelines are okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, my question wasn't answered. If I could have my question answered. My question was how many of these action items are actually currently being followed?
So my question would be, where did this list come from?
It, it came from these documents that say this is what we legally.
Which is California.
Can be doing. No, no, no. The FCM, Federation of Canadian Municipalities. They're, they're the ones where this information came from. This is, we have the right to be doing this.
According to the FCM.
According to the FCM.
Your worship, from what I understand, this is a checklist that was put together and it came from some citizens or whatever.
Right.
I haven't seen anything from an FCM or any federal government that has asked for any part of this checklist. We have an agreement that is in place that is considered responsible as far as the CRTC, as far as any other agreements go. And until we get any kind of word that something has changed, where we have to make sure that some other protocols are in place, this is, this is our marching orders that we have.
Exactly. So the organization that we are presently have an agreement with is not really governed by this checklist. Otherwise, they would have implemented it.
But they, they would have followed CRTC.
CRTC rules. So we're, we're stepping outside the parameters of our. Counselor Butler and then Counselor Ross, actually.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff and also to council. I can see why staff would be feeling uncomfortable already in agreements and these are big companies and they operate nationwide and to, to go to these companies and want to go through this checklist might seem cumbersome. I'm just wondering, because we already have four of these transmitters in place, two of them outside my house, by the way. Is there any way that it would still be cumbersome for staff to be able to consult with residents before these are put up outside their house? Getting rid of this whole checklist, how hard is it to go to a resident, find out from the telecom company where they're planning on installing their next set of transmitters and to be able to go to the residents within that area and just say, hey, you know, even a door hanger saying there's going to be a microcell installed in your neighborhood, do you wish to have feedback? Is that something that would be too difficult to, to let people in the area know that these things are coming into their area? And should they maybe wish to have it a block further down? That doesn't seem to be a, a huge onerous task if it's done beforehand. I mean, now I know that they're, they're already up outside my house, it's difficult and expensive to take them down and move them. But if you were to check with people ahead of time on the placement, is that something that, a conversation that could be had with the telecommunications company?
Maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I don't think that's in our jurisdiction as a municipality to tell.
Oh, it is, because we own, we own our, we own our coals, right? We own our own electric company.
To our CIO.
Your worship, the agreement that we have already in place doesn't speak to the addition of any other microcell towers. I believe that that part is completed. There has been no other talks with, with any telecommunications places that it's all of a sudden saying that they're going to be including any more, like the agreement's done and, and it's there.
Counselor Ross, you would.
About 10 years ago, maybe, maybe closer to 15, the Council of Canadians raised a bit of a red flag over cell towers. raised a bit of a red flag over cell tower placement. I know the, uh, chapter of Council Canadians in, um, close to my farm in southern Ontario, near the St. Lawrence River, um, you know, had a action against cell tower placement in, in their community. But, Council Canadians dropped it as an issue. Um, they picked up, you know, under Maud Barlow, they picked up food, and then they picked up water, and they decided that it wasn't a, a big enough an issue for them to even keep it, um, on their books. And they, there's nothing, they're not, they didn't do anything about it. Another organization that used to be known as RFI is the Et Cetera Group, and they work on issues around modern, monitoring, power, technology, and artificial intelligence. And although they've taken up issues around, um, nanotechnology, geoengineering, and gene use restriction technology, they have not seen, and they focus on technologies and their impact on humanity, the Et Cetera Group, which is international, and also involves the network of concerned science, scientists, which are an international organization. I'm sure you would love to know their work. They haven't picked up RF as an issue that we need to, as a society, really focus on anymore, um, at all. So, you know, for me, I have no problem with ticking the boxes in a checklist, as long as we're not committing ourselves to anything as a community. But when I look at these highly respected organizations of independent thinkers, that they haven't picked it up as an issue, that speaks, that speaks volumes to me. I have a lot of respect for those organizations.
Counselor Thompson.
Uh, thank you. If this document, uh, that Counselor Tripp has came through the, uh, through the FCM, then I would, I would think that the FCM would be lobbying the higher levels of government to implement a statutory, something along with these lines. Um, and, until we get, from my perspective, until we get something, uh, from the senior level of the government that says that this is best practices, or something that we should be doing, or are required to do, um, I, I think it's just, it's, it's, the, the, the microcells are already up, so, so checking this off will be redundant. Uh, and the second part of my comments are to, through you to, um, Mr. Reed, I guess is the one we're able to ask. Where, there's four microcells. Can you just tell us where the, they're located currently, please?
Sure. Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd allow the council.
They're around.
You want to?
So, um, as, as previously mentioned, Riverside Drive has some due to the location of the cell tower, and, um...
Are they both outside Council apartment house?
Yeah.
The general area. And then there's, uh, some further up in the west end of town.
At my house?
I'd have to check the exact location.
Out in front of the school?
There might be one.
There, there's one, I think, on 22nd Street, and then one towards the cemetery, um...
Okay.
Obviously.
All those in favor?
Oh, just, I have a more comment.
You, I think you've more than, you're three. Counselor Butler, you've done three.
It's in a response to something, so you're allowed to ask another question in response to a counselor's question under your role. I just wanted to respond to Counselor Thompson.
Counselor Thompson did not have a question, Counselor Butler, there was no question. You need a comment.
She was looking for the information from the FCM, and it was included in Counselor Tripp's report, than the, um, information that she supplies with her resolution. The FCM does have policy on it already.
So, just, just, uh...
Her citing cell towers.
For the microcells. Then, uh, the FCM, um, would be lobbying the senior level of the government, the CRTC, and there would be something that would be coming down, mandating that municipalities have to do this. And we haven't received that, and until we do, um, I, I, I can't see any, putting our staff through this at this point in time.
Okay. All those in favor? Any one opposed?
Counselor Ross, are you in favor?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Oh, it doesn't matter.
Well, you know, I mean, it's, anyway. You have a...
Yeah, either way, it's fallen off the table.
Fallen off the table.
Now, it's your resolution.
Yeah.
Now, you're going to put against it, just get back to me. What?
So, where not means where it isn't then.
Next item. Recommendation as council receives for decision, the funding request regarding minor costs for expenses directly associated with hosting an event of this size up to and not exceeding $500 from the Safe and Secure Grand Forks Forum, or ongoing issues of concern to the citizens of Grand Forks, including increased crime and overall safety, and where the city of Grand Forks is currently collaborating with agencies and organizations to co-host the forum. I'm over to you, Counselor Crogg, the second, or Counselor Tripp. Counselor Ross.
Um, uh, working, um, with Counselors Butler and Counselors Tripp, uh, and it was very much their initiative, and here from the community, we've just responded to what the community has asked for. And we've met now twice, and we've had many emails, and we have, um, collectively, um, put together what we think the agenda's going to be like. It's going to be open participatory dialogue, uh, with several people in the community who will bring information, and an opportunity for people in the community not only to share their experiences, but to ask pertinent questions. And it's also an opportunity for Mr. Elcock to potentially begin to get people who are wanting to be proactive and bringing solutions to sign up to his task force. Uh, we, and, when you see it here in my notes, a facilitator fee of $200. The facilitator who was going to work with us has decided not to work with us. Therefore, I will be facilitating unless somebody else here wants to do it. Um, and I will be working in concert with other counselors in order to put this, um, event on, and with the support of other folks in the community from various organizations. So, I just ask, it's, it's, it's a, I don't think we're going to spend $500. So, but we need, and I think just to make it welcoming and friendly, we will supply some, you know, some carrot sticks and coffee and tea and juice, just to make people feel a little bit more relaxed. Food tends to do that.
I know.
You, you want cookies?
Yeah.
We want your stuffed chicken wings.
So, in the setting up of the block watch, and we've just increased the, they allow the allowance from $1,000 to $2,000 for, $2,000 for the balance of this year. And I know that there's going to be some melding between, in this meeting, where, where it's an opportunity for them to initiate this block watch, and sign up volunteers, and inform people, and educate people in the process of how things are going. I'm wondering if that increase in the budget that we've approved would be enough to, would also allow for this event to take place and cover the cost of this. So, you want us to rob, rob?
Yeah, keep it...
Robbed, to pay?
Keep it separate, keep it clean.
That's fine.
And any leftover money can come back from the $2,000. So, if we keep it clean, they are separate. And if they don't spend all the other money, that's fine, it comes back.
Counselor Ross.
We've also, um, council did receive a, a letter that we've written to Judy Darcy, who is the minister for, um, world minister for, um, mental health and addictions. So, that's, we're not just talking about, about, um, neighborhood watch, we're going to be talking about addictions, and homelessness, and other factors that may have, you know, have, you know, seen an increase in, in crime in the city. So, I think we do need to keep it separate.
Counselor Crogg.
Oh, just a comment, because I know the community's request was to deal with perceived increase in crime. Um, there was the other meeting, um, that was held at the Gospel Chapel, and people wanted to speak about crime and victimization and stuff. But that agenda got eaten up by the homelessness and the addiction, which are totally tied into it. And that's the only thing that concerned me, was the last thing you said, because I see it just as an exact, it'll just get mired down. My understanding was it, was going to be people coming forward with ideas that made work. So, they're not going to solve addiction, they're not going to solve homelessness. So, how do we reduce crime? And keep in mind, that's the bigger picture that we need to deal with. But I think what the community wants is, is this, what can I do, what's immediate? And I would just hate to see it get swallowed up again, and nothing come of it.
So, Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Tripp, and then Counselor Butler.
Um, I, I agree with, uh, a lot of what Counselor Crogg said. Um, the meeting, the only, well, I think they had two meetings at the Gospel Chapel, and I only went to the one. Um, and people left because they had been victimized, and they were not being heard. And I think it's very, very important that those people have the, um, ability to vent. And I think that's, uh, in a lot of cases, that's what they want to do, they want to, you know, to vent, and I, and they weren't afforded that opportunity at that, at the meeting, and they left, um, disappointed, upset, angry, probably, in, in, in some cases. Um, not all homeless are criminals. Um, people with addictions, uh, not all of whom are, I would say, are not criminals. There, there, there are those within that communities that are. Um, and we, as a council, aren't going to be able to solve the problems of, of addiction and, and, uh, uh, mental abuses. And I hope somebody from IHA is going to be there that can address those particular concerns. Um, because I don't want to, I, I don't want us to be viewed as exacerbating an already, um, ongoing problem. I, I want to hear what people have to say, I want to hear what they, what they propose on how it can be improved. I want to hear from the professionals in the field that can respond, um, from a professional perspective to the issues that brought forward.
Counselor Tripp. Counselor Butler, Counselor Crogg.
I know Counselor Crogg wants to respond to that, and, and, and I, and it won't take long, but, um, just to say that I think that, that meeting that happened at Gospel Chapel, um, is, was never meant to be what, what we're planning here. And I really don't think that this, um, I mean, some of those people will be invited, but they won't be invited. It, it's just not the same type of, of setup, and, I mean, those people were getting together at Gospel Chapel because Dar Sutton was having individual communications with people in the community who were on the, um, helping side of it. And so, they gathered together in one forum, in one place, to do that.
Counselor Thompson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, how I envisioned this meeting was as a response to the community and things that I've seen on Facebook, saying, why isn't anybody doing anything? Why is this still happening? Why are the criminals not getting charged? And I think people are starting to get frustrated with the RCMP. And I know that from conversations I've had with Mr. Fenske, when he explained, from their point of view, why they're not able to charge people, why things are happening the way they are, like he came and did a presentation for the Downtown Business Association and explained the troubles that they're having. And I think once I had that information, it made a lot more sense to me, and made me more sympathetic of the RCMP's situation. And also, in talking with friends that work for IHA or mental health, to understand their situation of the roadblocks they're coming up against, um, when they're trying to deal with people that are brought in with mental health or addictions issues. When I see their struggles, it's not that they're lazy or they're not doing their job, it's just there's so much red tape in our society today that they're trying to wade through, and they're doing the best that they can with it. I want to hear presentations from those people on what they're doing, and the challenges that they're facing. And then hopefully, as counselors, when we hear from these different people and get more understanding, we'll have a better direction of where we can go when talking to ministers, or which higher levels of government we can collectively approach to try and get this red tape moved, so that we can assist our RCMP and our, our hospital in being more effective in dealing with these situations, and getting these people off the street, whether it's in jail, or whether it's in treatment facilities where they can get help. Because we're not doing them any favors by leaving them out on the streets. They're, you know, they, they need help getting through these addictions that are just more and more horrible as the years go on with the, the strength of drugs that are out there. So, it's really for me, an opportunity for the professionals to be able to share with the community what they're doing, the challenges they're having. And we were hoping to have a drop box for questions ahead of time, so that people could come to City Hall, drop off their questions in a box, so that we can review them ahead of time, categorize them, and maybe diffuse some of the anxiety, and maybe some of the emotions that might go along with those questions. The facilitator will pose those questions to the panel, and then, um, they can get their answers. And then at the end, if there's still questions that need to be asked, we can hear from the audience. I'm not looking, I mean, people want to be heard, but I, I don't think they need to vent on council, they don't need to vent on the RCMP. Once they've heard the information, I think it diffuses a lot of that emotionalism that goes along with it.
Counselor Crogg.
Yeah, uh, totally support it, going to vote for it. The only concern was the last statement. Um, and my understanding, what I'd like to see, because as a resident, I show up, and they tell me how powerless they are. And I'm like, well, that sucks. Now I don't feel any better. And just venting isn't good either. What we need is that, exactly what you're talking about, and what you're talking about, but also the input, what can we do? What can I do as a person?
Yeah.
Like, that's where this popped up.
Yeah.
That's where, um, COTTS is getting, uh, a bigger boost. So, what can we do? There was, uh, there's been lists compiled about, um, things, um, and everybody, like on Facebook, the city's not doing anything. And it's just like, well, have you come up with ideas that the city could implement? Right? To, to make it more accessible? What, what can the regional district do? What, what, how do we help the RCMP? How do we help those? Addiction's going to be there, and homelessness is going to be there. But how do we create safer communities? And those answers are going to come from the people. So, we have to have enough time to hear those suggestions and answers, and then go through the information.
Okay, Counselor Ross.
Perhaps my choice of words of venting is, was, was poor one, but I, you know, people want to be heard. And I, I think that's where I was, I really tried to go with that. Because they have concerns, and, uh, they, they want to be heard, they want to express themselves, and I think that this is a really good forum and opportunity to introduce that.
Okay. I have a question. Counselor, it's called a question. Yes. I just have a quick comment on the matter, very short and brief. I had met with the Nelson detachment portion of the RCMP, as requested of any time. And after speaking to Darren Oakey, he had stated he's going to be giving us statistical data, real data, that data whichever way you want to use the terminology, which will probably help, once that is released, it'll help a lot, because then the constituents and the citizens in this community will realize what really goes on on the broader spectrum in regards to the RCMP. I know we all look at it in our own backyard here, that we've got this problem, that problem, what are we doing about it? Well, after having this conversation, this lengthy conversation with our CAO, myself, it's going to open up a whole different avenue. Citizens are going to see what goes on in Caramias, in Oliver, and then we will be able to form a true opinion that we are not alone on this. I know that doesn't help and is not comforting, but at the same time, maybe that will help, as he stated, to give more clarification of what really is going on within the police force.
Will we have one more question?
Very surprised, very shortly. I don't think he said it was going to be that long, he's going to afford it all.
Yeah, I think Your Worship, that they had received some recent data, and I think it was just a matter of, uh, some conversations with the local detachment.
Yeah, he was going to compile it, and then he was actually going to look into some implemented measures with our local, that's...
It would be good if we put that in.
Counselor Tripp, and, uh, Counselor Ross was first.
I was just going to say, maybe, you know, if you have any information, you'd like to present it.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, that's the whole idea. And that was his suggestion too, that, that maybe if we are able to present this to the citizens, they'll have a better overview, and a more clarification, and a more, let's say transparency of what is really going on.
Excellent.
Counselor Ross.
Okay, she basically said most of what I want to say.
I don't need to talk anymore.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question. So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carrie. Item seven. Report from the council representative, that would be myself. There is no report this week, or at this meeting. So, moving on to.
Okay, your second question?
Go ahead.
So, you're designated to the RDKB, but also to IHA. Do you attend the IHA meetings as well?
Yes, I do.
The board at West Cooten.
Yeah, at West Cooten, WK, West Cooten Boundary.
Regional Hospital.
Yeah, the Regional Hospital.
Not IHA, that's two different.
Not IHA, it's a regional hospital board, Cooten Boundary.
So is there any opportunity for council to post questions to that board, or to?
We get usually the updates sent, and I forward them to council all the time, to FIA for your information.
Right, so do we have an opportunity to present, like, with the situations we're dealing with, with mental health and addictions, are we able to formulate questions through you to that board?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that maybe something that would?
Oh, another avenue, yeah. That's a good approach. But usually, you don't have counselors appearing unless you want to be there as a gallery.
No, but you.
I wouldn't be able to present any concerns or questions, absolutely.
So we haven't been utilizing that avenue.
No, but may I just let you know that it's a pretty tough avenue to go with IHA because there's usually not much response at these meetings.
Example letter that we're gonna send to Judy Darcy?
We could do that.
And just let them FYI to them.
Yeah.
You didn't read that letter, did you?
Which one?
The one that I wrote, that should go out on behalf of the city. We are, when are we gonna talk about that?
I don't know when we're gonna talk about it.
Because I need to go.
Counselor Crog.
Yeah, the West Cooten Hospital Regional District Board, a lot of their function is capital and finance. And they get presentations from IHA to do with capital, to do with equipment. Yes, members can bring things forward. And I'm pretty sure that the Regional District of Central Cooten, which is more than half that board, where the minority, the Regional District of Cooten Boundary, would see benefit in lobbying IHA. But I don't know if that meeting's the perfect.
No, you're not, that's not the proper for. Money, it's mostly money, the projects, the funding, how much IHA contributes. And when questions have been brought up, like I said earlier, with all due respect, there hasn't been much of a response from IHA.
Maybe that needs to change.
Well, I think you would not be the first one, Counselor Butler, because there's many mayors and representatives at that table that have requested many requests to IHA, and a lot of which was responded, as we will get back to you, or we have no response at this time.
The other thing too, is that at UBCM, we have an opportunity to meet with representatives from interior health there. And that would be probably something that cunts might want to become for 2018.
Yeah, which I believe you did one two years ago. Exactly, you met with.
We all did.
Yeah, we all did, exactly. Okay. Might as well take a kick at the can and try it, but I don't think there's gonna be much response going that avenue. To be totally honest, we have to attend one of those meetings to see if there's some.
Well, what's the point in us being there? What can we get out of sitting at that table? We don't seem to be getting anything out of it.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that.
But that's not the purpose. But that's not its purpose. It's not dealing with operations.
Yeah, exactly.
Just dealing with the capital projects.
Yes, with capital projects, those are on the shelf, those are coming off the shelf, etc.
Somebody got a new boiler.
Yeah. And when and if, if and when they're gonna do our renovations here and stuff like that.
But it doesn't prevent us from putting, say, that letter before them, through the mayor, and getting their support to lobby, not as the WK RMP, but as each community and each community leader and all the regional district. That's the benefit of it, is that you've got that many people sitting around the table.
Who chairs that board, Mr. Mayor?
Marguerite?
No, Marguerite was, no, she does not chair it. She was, do you want to call it? And I forgot the new chair's name.
And we're like way outvoted. So if the Boundary, Cooten Boundary wanted to do something, and CK said, no, we're doing this, then, yeah. It's been a problem.
There's way more prominence of Central Cooten and East Cooten on that board. We're really a major minority.
Okay.
Like a mouse.
So it's quite a wide spread group. Does everybody come together for the meeting, or is it all by phone?
No, it's huge. It's a huge table.
And you meet once a month?
Ah, yeah. I think there's total of four, four, five, five, I believe, of these meetings in a whole year. And again, it's, like again, it's almost a monetary base. So there's really not much news. You get more news coming out when they forward the bulletins through the email.
Yeah.
You get more information there, actually, what's going on. Like, new care beds, etc., etc. But there's not much discussion at the actual meeting, except monetary of how they're gonna pay for those care beds, or how they want to get the money to pay for them. All right, now, moving on to item eight A. Recommendation for staff from staff for decision, 2018 regular and committee of whole meeting schedule from corporate services. The recommendation is that council adopts the meeting dates as presented and provides notice to the public of the 2018 regular council meeting schedule and the schedule for the committee of the whole. Excuse me. And further, be it resolved that council direct staff should publish the notice in the Gazette in accordance with the community charter.
Please, Counselor Ross, Counselor Crog. Discussion, Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I had asked a CAO about this, and I know there were some reasons given, but I'm just going to bring it forward for council to at least consider. I would like to see the dates for September through November moved back, I guess you'd say, like, later on in the month, by one week. That, the reason being that we have the UBCM convention in September, the 11th, 12th, 13th, that week. So coming back and having a meeting on the 17th will mean that we will have no opportunity to, really, to report anything that we've done down at the UBCM. Because we don't basically get home until the weekend. And we're fried because we've had an extremely busy week. And if council, if it wasn't too much of an imposition for staff, if we could just move the next, like, move it back and then move the next month's meetings back until the end of November. I think we'd have to make one shift onto a Tuesday for a holiday that may be in there. But then we'd go to the regular meeting in December. I don't know if that's workable, but I'd like to recommend that.
You know, I hear what Counselor Tripp is saying, and I agree. If we had the meeting on the 24th of September, I wouldn't recommend changing the November dates because the 5th is the inaugural meeting, is really, as I recall, nothing that's talked about. You know, there's no agenda, because everybody will, there could be some new faces. So September, October, I agree.
And leave it, so that's just one week between the October meeting and the November meeting, then? What would that make it?
The November meeting, the inaugural.
It's not, it's just a.
It's a fresh page, restart.
Okay, your worship, go for that.
Your worship, the only reason why we put the meetings like this, and we very well can put one to the 24th. And that would put the committee of the whole, basically, just the day after Thanksgiving. What we were trying to avoid is that having a meeting too close to the general voting date is what we were trying to avoid. So that was the analogy. But if council is fine with that, it's, you know, we can definitely do that. We're just thinking about that, when you're getting too close to election time, sometimes it's.
You'd still have two weeks.
Yeah, there's still two weeks. And so, you know, council would prefer to, that we could take and progress September 24th as a regular meeting. And then we would have to progress the October, plus to October 9th for the committee of the whole.
That's right, yeah, that would be good, yeah. And then the 23rd.
27th.
Oh, so, yeah, no, that's right, you don't have to move that one, right? Just leave it on the 27th.
22nd would stay, it would be, basically what that is, is it's the last meeting of the current council. It's always, NS council would prefer not to have a meeting right after the election. You could always kill that meeting.
But after the election?
Yeah, we have one, or, yes, after the election on the 22nd. We actually have one of the last regular meeting, current council. Our council could actually effectively, if you felt that was, you know, following the election, we could actually zero that meeting completely out. If it's something that council chooses.
Counselor Ross.
I would suggest that we keep the meeting of the 22nd. May not have a lot of business on there, but it's an opportunity for, if there are new faces at the table, to bring them up to date on what's been happening.
Of course, current council wouldn't be, or the new council wouldn't be sitting at the table because they're not scoring in yet, so.
No.
Yeah, they could be in the gallery. Yeah, exactly, so. There's pros and cons.
Yeah, I know. We can cancel it in October and publish it if we decide that that's what we want to do.
Okay, any other discussion?
So are you putting that forward as amendment?
Yes, if I could. And with these changes too. I mean, the only way I agree to concern you is that one UBCM.
And the 1st of October, the.
Is this a possibility or just a consideration?
Your worship, I'd say it's well established for Counselor Tripp's suggestion. We can just amend the dates to reflect that the regular meeting on the 17th would be moved to the 24th of September. And the October 1st committee of the whole regular would be moved to the 9th, it would be a Tuesday.
You guys have seconded that? Doesn't matter, maybe.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carrie. Okay, item eight B. Appointments of acting mayor for council of the year 2017, 2018. Recommendation is that council designates the members of council to serve on a rotating basis as acting mayor during the 2017, 2018, which includes Counselor Butler from December 2017 to January 2018, Counselor Hammett from February 2018 to March 2018, Counselor Crog from April 2018 to May 2018, Counselor Ross from June 2018 to July 2018, Counselor Thompson from August 2018 to September 2018, and Counselor Tripp, October 2018. Counselor Butler, second, Counselor Ross. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie. Eight C. Water rate structure for mock billing process as a subject matter or manager of operations. And the recommendation is that council direct staff to proceed with the flat fixed or minimum water rate structure to use in the mock billing process. I would suggest we break this resolution into two because I think this is gonna get some really healthy discussion going on. Counselor Thompson, I'm the second, or Counselor Hammett?
Oh, I wanted to amend.
You haven't even picked your fixed or minimum.
Okay, so what's your amendment?
I want to delete any mock billing period.
That's not a friendly amendment.
I didn't say it was a friendly amendment. I said I wanted to amend it.
That's not amending the motion, that's putting forward a different one. Yeah, you're trying to slip it in there.
Well, you have a chance on the second amendment.
Okay.
Because that's where we deal with the mock billing period.
Oh, okay.
Just a friendly suggestion.
Thank you.
Be a friendly.
Nice draw, though, nice draw.
Okay, so I need a mover and a seconder for the first recommendation. Counselor Hammett, second, if we never had a mover, so I need a seconder now. Counselor Ross.
I do have a friendly amendment.
Counselor Thompson? It's on the table.
No. I'll wait till I get the tickets.
Any discussion? We need to discuss this. Which are we going with, Counselor Butler?
So, I actually, I have a problem with all these rate structures right now at the moment just because they're not reflecting accurately what our intent was for even installing water meters, which was to have user pay, right? I mean, we have industry using, industry and non-residentials. We're not really sure which, it wasn't delineated for us. But the non-residential are using 37% of the water. And the different options we're being given here don't reflect that in the billing process. We're only seeing a 28 or 26% contribution from industry slash non-residential. And I was hoping that when staff brought this back, we might have had an option where it accurately reflected industry's use. Because I don't want to see gardeners subsidizing industry. I just don't think that's fair. We end up with a Nestle scenario there, and it's not something that the public is interested in. If you want user pay, let's do it right, and let's have industry paying their fair share. So I was hoping that we could send this back to staff to have the numbers corrected so that either the fixed or the minimum charge has that flat rate that will increase industry up to their 37%. And either that or have them pay more per cubic meter of water so that it accurately reflects the 37%. Yeah, I think that's all. I had a couple other points, but I'll just leave that one there.
Counselor Hammett, Counselor Tripp.
Yeah, this question was posed to our engineers when they made the presentation. And they did have an answer, and I can't remember what it was, but it made sense when they were asked why they weren't paying a higher percentage, seeing as they had 30. And it might have been a question that you posed, Counselor Ross.
Size of the water meter. In retrospect to the residential meters, the capacity in the bottom.
So it was more equitable for residential than commercial anyway? So there was a logistics behind it, and it made sense, and it was fair and equitable, so.
Unless I'm totally wrong, to our manager, because commercial or industrial will never have the same size water meters as residential, so flow capacities were equivalent in the smaller sized meter for residential. So unless I understood that wrong.
That's more or less correct, Mr. Mayor. What?
More or less. That's a more than answer. Is it more or less correct?
Approximately correct.
We're on the more side. The, what the consultant had said was that if you had a fixed portion of the charge, it needed to be based on the theoretical or the size of the water meter amount. And the variable portion of the charge would be based on the actual water usage. So, given that two of the three rate structures under discussion have a portion that has fixed and variable, both portions in there, part of it would be based on the theoretical water usage, based on the size of the connection. And the other part would be based on the actual water usage. And then the elaboration was that, or the inference from that was that if you did want to have an entirely, I guess, equitable or whatever you charge, it would have to be 100% variable or to base it on the actual water consumed.
So whatever the mathematical reasons are, the bottom line's still the same. They're not paying 37% of the costs for water. And they're using 37% of the cost. not paying 37% of the costs for water, and they're using 37% of the water. That's a real simple answer, I don't care how you want to divide it into inches of pipes and water meters, the data that we have, from what I understand, is saying that this section of the utility is using 37% of the water. They need to pay for 37% of it, however you want to do the math to work that out, that's what I need to see in order to have an equitable billing system.
Council Crogg?
Yeah, um, yes, industry uses more.
Okay, Council.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Maybe I should let you go, because you're probably gonna forget what you wanted to respond to with her comment. Are you? Because I'm gonna take it in a totally different direction.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to respond. Um, yes, industry uses more, if we want them to.
Industry uses less.
Oh, sorry, they use more than they're paying for, right? They also pay more taxes than a residential does, they employ more people, which actually are the residential people. And yes, there's been abuses of water in the past, people look at, at, and bring up Nestle or anybody else, but there is justification for not paying for 30 something percent of the water. It's the other benefits that offset that, so.
Excellent.
Maybe look at the plot of line again, it's not that big a variable, really not. Council Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. And, yeah, so, I have been really wrestling with this over the weekend, and, and what I did was, I actually ranked the considerations listed by staff, and I just want to commend the staff for the way that they just so succinctly drew out the salient points of all the discussions that went on, you did a great job, and I really appreciate that. But all things being equal, when I went through that list, I really came back to the flat rate, ranking the highest on, on, actually, there were four points. It was the right to use water for food gardens, and these were the points that you guys had listed out. It was equity between seasonal and full-time residents, it was revenue stability, and it was asset management implementation. And overall, the flat rate actually ranked, I mean, it got four and a half, while the other ones got lesser points. So, I, and I know we're looking at water conservation possibly being a much higher weight in all of those things, and the point that I made was those things being equal. But what I too agree with, with Council Butler's comment is there's, I'd like to see a hybrid solution that, that provides a flat rate for the residential users, and then some sort of an additional fixed charge for the, for the non-residential. Because I, you know, I went back to our strategic plan, and I read through that, and the current city vision is, and this was right there in black and white, a garden city growing opportunities within the boundary country. And the plan states that gardening requires affordable water, like, it's right there in the plan. The plan also states that we advocate for appropriate funding for our most vulnerable residents. And so, I just, I just feel that I also am not going to be able to vote for any of the three options that are coming up, and that I, what I would like to see is it taken back for staff to maybe bring back some sort of a hybrid combination that, that we can maybe look at.
Council Hammond?
Yeah, I've talked to people over the past couple of weeks that do have their own gardens at home, and they're in agreement that people need to pay for what they use. And in particular, I spoke to somebody that has quite a large garden, and they didn't feel that they, that their water consumption was excessive. They felt that they should be paying for what they use, but they didn't feel that it was going to be in excess to what they're paying now, because they, they manage to water every second day, they don't have their tax going constantly, people that have drip irrigation are able to conserve water. So, from the people I've talked to, it hasn't been an issue. I only think it's fair for people to pay for what they use. And as I said before, I don't grow my own garden, so I don't eat for free, I buy my groceries at the grocery store. Those people that do grow their own gardens and eat their own food, save money at the grocery store. So if you want me to subsidize your water so that you can eat your own food, I'd like you to subsidize my groceries. I think that's only fair.
If I may just ask, our manager of operations, was there not even a discussion with our consultants that there's a possibility, because this has been on the table of discussion many times with our former CEO, possible of a form of a green rebate to individuals that have gardens from the municipality? If there's substantial proof that you grow your own gardens, that you can get a form of a rebate or a reduced rate on the fact that you have your own garden, compared to if you, let's say, go to, pay as you go to set, like, fixed, or, where you would get some kind of credit, the fact of green credit, growing your own garden. Is that, that's still a possibility that the city could exercise?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did have that conversation with the consultant when we were trying to look together these numbers. We did, you know, struggle with some of the principles, and tried to come up with a fair proportion and rate for, for everyone in the options that we brought forward. I don't know if council remembers some of the, one graph that we brought forward, really showed the non-residential at a fairly consistent rate across the year, with the residential with a huge spike in the summer. And that kind of brought forward the conversation about whether we would give credits, or, or how we would handle gardens, because we heard that was an issue with council, in or take away from our main meeting. Now, in talking about giving credits, and that it kind of, again, went away from the equitable, everybody pays for what they use, so we, we did throw it around and have a very fulsome discussion about it, but we couldn't come to any sort of rationale or, or way we could do that by the time that the meeting.
Yeah, I understand, at this particular point in time, but I'm saying there's always that possibility, like, we spoke, I spoke to, that this can be tweaked at later point, once we see how significant the so-called homeowners that are growing their own gardens is. There may only be a handful, so then it's, it's a non-issue. But if there are a significant amount of homeowners that grow their own gardens, the possibility, possibly still could be there, where we could look at it and tweak the whole situation for those individuals, in the form of a green rebate or something.
If, if that was councils wish staff could look at different options.
Yeah, once it's in motion, yeah, once it's in motion, I'm not saying to integrate it now at this particular point in time. Once we establish a particular rate, like a flat, fixed, or minimum, without any mock billing, of course, then we could look at the other issues.
I think, Diana.
Sure, go ahead.
Your worship, I guess the other part, when I could see where, you know, there would be a struggle in the fact that, you know, how do you rate, who has a garden? Somebody could have a backyard as a full garden, somebody could have a garden box, but use water on something else, and say, well, I use it on my garden, so you could have the potential for people to, and I, I don't know if people would, but you could have the potential for the abuse of, of usage of water, because somebody has a little garden box, and say, well, I've got a garden, and I'm gonna use X amount, and of course, somebody else has a larger one, so I think, I don't know, where, where you get the final line of how you actually.
Well, you could set, you could set certain standards, and kind of realistic approaches would have to be used, I mean, you would set a standard, I mean, if somebody's got a, let's say, I don't know, a 30 by 40 garden, and someone with a 5 by 5 garden comes up with the same request for a credit, well, you know, you basically say, well, that's not on paper. But that's not on paper, no, what I'm just saying, because of the concern so much by certain councils regarding the garden, and having your own garden, these are issues that could be addressed if they, possibly, if they could become serious issues, needing a worthwhile address. Okay, who's next?
Me.
Council one.
I'm the next step. Okay, I was going to mention something that Ms. Heinrich mentioned as well. And, like, we made a resolution here as a council shortly after we were elected, that we, it was a resolution that we would never sell our water. We passed a resolution here, so we don't need to talk about Nestle's, we don't have to make people think that we're gonna have Nestle's come in here and suck our aquifer dry, because we made a commitment to our community that we would never let that happen. So, don't worry about it, it's not gonna happen, Nestle isn't ever gonna come in here and buy our water as long as we're sitting in these seats. I have farm status, I have 7.3 acres just outside of the city, I can walk downtown in about 20 minutes, and I have farm status, I got it within nine months of buying my farm, I have never used overhead sprinklers. I grow my food, and I sell food commercially, using trickle irrigation. So, the right to use water for food gardens is, can be done using trickle irrigation and not overhead sprinklers. Conservation is possible, I don't think growing food is, when you grow food, it's not free. It's a commitment to the seed in the soil, it costs a lot of money to feed your soil, it's a, it's a, it's a.
It's a choice.
It's, it's a choice, but it's, there's so many benefits to growing food. It's for mental health, spiritual health, and physical health, it's an important activity. It doesn't mean we're not supporting the grocery stores, what we're choosing to do is nourish ourselves in different ways, and it's better for the environment. I would like to see industry paying their fair share, and at the same time, I want whatever water rate we choose, to ensure that we pay our fixed costs, no matter what. If we have a wet summer, I want to make sure we pay our fixed costs, I want to make sure industry pays their fair share, and I would like, I would like it to be equitable. And I'm wondering, what is the best, out of the three scenarios, which one is rendering all those bells? Conservation, conservation, ensuring conservation, ensuring we pay our fixed costs, and that industry pays its fair share? What? Oh, yeah, that's the. So which one is it?
I want to mull over those ideas. The biggest thing that hits gardeners in the pocketbook everywhere that this is introduced, and it's always a backdoor thing, no one expects, no one thinks about, is your sewer rates, because your sewer rates are based on your metered water rates, so while you're growing your garden, you're being charged for the theoretical water that's going down your drain and isn't. So your sewer rates go through the roof in the summertime, and you're not using the sewer. It's not fair to base your sewer rate on your water consumption in a place like Grand Forks where you're growing a garden in 40 degree heat, it's ridiculous, and it hits every gardener in the pocketbook, and it's just, it's really sad. And we're not talking about that here, and it's not even being considered, and it needs to be considered, that we do not charge metered sewer rates in the summertime, because it's gonna kill, it's gonna kill anyone with the garden.
Is that a line?
Yeah, we do, we, we charge sewer based on a metered rate for the people that have water meters, they've been paying metered sewer rates for years, and it happens in every town. Yeah, your sewer rate is linked to your water consumption. On the profit, or on the, um, commercial customers that are already on meters, yeah, that's just the way it goes, urban systems will recommend that.
Commercial customers.
Yeah, the ones that are already metered.
Are you a commercial customer?
No, the ones that are already metered, that your sewer rate, you're not paying yet based on a consumption rate, but once you are, your sewer rates become tied to your water consumption.
But how many commercial businesses are growing?
I think, also, I think we're deviating from.
No, this is an important topic, that you have to, no, you have to consider this when you're considering water rates, because your sewer rate will be tied to your water rate, and that big spike that you have in the summertime is gonna spike your sewer costs.
But that, sorry, but that spikes, that's not just gardeners that cause that spike, that's everybody in Grand Forks, that's everything, from every kiddie pool, to swimming pool, to garden, to lawn, to everything. So it's not just.
It's not going down our sewers, we see that, no, so we should not be paying a metered sewer rate for the huge amount of water that we're using in the summertime.
Are they probably paying a metered sewer rate? Do we have, is that not a viral?
I've never saw that, I've never saw a metered sewer rate.
Are we paying?
We're not right now, because we're not metered.
But we even have it in our viral.
But once you become metered, you pay your sewer rates based on your metered water rates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct, for the customers who are paying metered water, they are, they are also paying a sewage rate that's based on the amount of water that they use. We have recognized this, for, that it will be an issue with residential customers, like the fact that they do water in the summertime, and it doesn't go down the sewer, so we would factor that in to revised sewer rates.
So you're gonna mitigate it?
It was originally part of the overall view that we were looking at, but the water rates, and we separated it up.
So then you're gonna have to know who your gardeners are?
No.
Well.
If you're using this much, everybody's using that much, not just gardeners, so then sewer rates for that type of year may be changed or dealt with, or whatever, but not specific to a gardener, or somebody that has giant flower beds, or what.
Why don't we just pass a, have a, a, a ban on, on washing cars in your driveway, and then no water is going down the sewer?
Sorry, we were, we were looking at, at taking the six-month winter out, and then working from that, so that we took out the summertime peak. The, the issue with the summertime peak is, it was substantially, well, it was residential irrigation or residential use that was driving that. We tried to quantify the cost to the system, or the additional increase, and, and there wasn't really any way to do it besides doing a cost of service. So we, we thought that there was kind of an unfair, maybe, price put on the residents for the water, but also, if you look at the flat rate of the non-residential, we would need some of the infrastructure that we have, so we tried to factor that in, and that's why it's not exactly the 37% that the, the non-residential pays.
So exactly, so if you use, if you use a comparative in the winter rates, and interpolate to, you should be able to come up with a half decent number, which, for the summer spike, right?
For residents only, not for.
For residents, I'm talking about.
Right.
Right, sorry, I was, I was talking, the sewer rates initially, so we would look at the, the six months where the, the water use is fairly consistent, and there would be no outdoor irrigation.
Exactly.
For the rate concerned between non-metered, or, sorry, non-residential and residential, that's where I was talking about the cost of service, and the difference between the huge summer peak there, and how to, whether we would be penalizing non-residential if it was paying their, their share, because there is additional cost for that, that peak, that, with wells and different things.
The costly pumps, the wells, the maintenance, exactly. Council Tripp?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Colonel, through you the data there, I'm just wondering, like, when I'm looking at that graph, is that in July and August, is the consumption like 320-some-odd-thousand or whatever cubic meters that the residential are using in that, in that period? For July and August, the blue, is that 300 and, it, it seems to be between 300 and 350 there, right? So is that, is that the, is that what the residential uses in that period?
Yeah.
That's it? And, and down below there, where you see the other sort of averages that go along, that's somewhere between 50 and 100,000, right? So is that, I'm just trying to figure out, that, that spike actually represents 37%? It just seems like it's an awful lot, if it's 37% of the total. Of the total of everything, like, just of, like, of the total.
So I read that as, as the, the total residential consumption over the year, 37% of that happens in July and August.
Right? Is that what you're saying? Right, so if we take all of those other blue lines and stack them up. So if we take all of those other blue lines and stack them up, then that blue line is going to be 30%, 7% of all the other blue lines. Is that, that's correct?
No, I don't think so.
I don't know, somehow, it just doesn't...
It was, it was all the lines.
It was all the lines. It's the, both the blue and the brown. It's, it's both the blue and the brown then. That establishes more sense.
Yeah. That's what I did. Yeah, I think we're the confusing community because I'm a bit confused too. Because non-residential uses 37% of the overall volume all year, volume, and residential uses 63%.
And this is how much they use in each time period?
Yeah.
Welcome to the question. Um, just got a, just a quick little question. We have a large farm inside city limits now. Is that on a well or is that on city water? The one up behind the hospital there?
I believe they have their own well.
Yeah, is it on Sion? On the irrigation district?
Yeah, it's not on.
It's got its own?
Yeah, it was city.
And one other question. Is it possible to have a higher allotment of water during the summertime considering that across the board even non-gardeners use more in the summertime?
If, if that's counsel's wish, we could see how we could work that into a formula or something.
Counselor Thompson.
This is, I think what frustrates a lot of the people that talk to me is that, you know, we can, we can argue this and we go around and encircles and eat ourselves coming We need to make a decision. And, and this, you know, going back to our staff and asking for this and that and the other thing, I mean, it's just, it's taking more and more time and it's stalling and it's... And, and quite frankly, I don't think it's fair to our residents, commercial, industrial or residential. Let's get on with it. This is just, this is just absolutely ludicrous, what's going on and, and I, I, we were elected to make a decision, let's make one.
I have motion.
Yeah, well, we have to...
Oh, we were, oh. You haven't, let's, the motion. You haven't picked, that's what we've got to do. That's what she asked you. Did we have motion before, Ray?
Your worship, it was basically, it was Pastor Ross and it was resolved that, and then you pretty much have to...
Yeah.
The piece that's in there, so...
Exactly. Fixed or flat, fixed or minimum...
You have to pick the option to insert into that piece of the resolution.
Yeah, the flat, fixed or minimum water use rate charter for use in the building process and eliminate the remark.
Yes.
All right. So, okay, which one are they picking for the motion?
I thought Counselor Ross had one.
Okay, let's pull, let's pull, let's pull the counselors. One by one, let's see who wants more.
Doesn't satisfy all my needs, but I would proceed with a fixed rate.
Okay, Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I would go with a fixed charge, so...
Counselor Tripp?
No, I would want a hybrid of flat and, and a minimum charge for the non-residential users. So I wouldn't be able to make those...
You want option three?
No, no, I want a flat rate for residential and then a minimum water rate charge for non-residential. So I want a hybrid that doesn't currently exist. So I'll be voting no for all of them.
Counselor Butler?
I concur with Counselor Tripp and unfortunately, in our literature here, it says that we're paying for all the water we use and it's illegal in D.C. to charge for water. We're stating here that we're charging people for water. We're only allowed to charge for the delivery of the water.
Well, it's the cost of the offering of the service and it's based on...
Yeah.
But we're stating here that we're charging people to pay for the water that they use, which I can't support.
I would support the system based on the...
Okay, so Counselor Hammond?
I would go with either fix, option two or three, probably two, because it promotes conservation all year round and it's equitable to all users.
Fixed?
Yeah, option two, of course.
Okay, so, fixed? Okay, and myself, I would go with fixed also and I would concur, unfortunately, that's not in the recommendation, but eliminate mock, but first round, fixed. So fixed, basically accepted to Counselor Butler and Tripp, that voted against. All those in favor? Anyone opposed, Counselor Butler, Counselor Tripp? Okay, fixed it is.
Good beauty, but it's mock billing, so once we go from mock to real billing, we can assess it and we can make changes at that time.
Counselor Thompson. The second part, further resolved, council directs staff to implement the water rate mock billing process for 12 to 24 months. Twelve.
Twelve.
Zero. Idiot.
Counselor Butler?
Twenty-four.
Counselor Tripp?
Thirty-six, is that enough?
Yeah. Well, it's a moot point because I didn't vote for any of them.
Yeah, that's true.
So...
Yeah. And myself, of course, I concur with Counselor Thompson, I would say zero.
Yeah, but I mean, after 12 months, it doesn't mean that we have to go into actual billing. We can decide, okay, that didn't work very well, let's go into another 12 months and it'll bill in a different...
I understand that, but my recommendation would be that Counselor Thompson too, implement it immediately at a fixed rate as soon as possible that the bylaw changes could be put.
Why don't we give the six months so that staff has got time to get, follow us through and get them ready to pass?
I would really like to see it implemented in 2018 because I don't want this dragging into another election issue.
Here's a, here's a question I have, Counselor Thompson, to staff. Based on this second part of this recommendation, this is a question I guess we, I've never asked or nobody has asked this, is if we choose 12 or 24, when does it start, the mock billing? Has anybody considered when exactly do we have an official date that the mock billing would start? Should we choose 12, 24? I know we can't do zero because...
Unless there is some other...
Our chief financial officer, I think, has a response with that.
That's a good question, Mr. Mayor, because it, there's going to be a bit of logistical difficulty with that, our, our actual system. And it might, it, we, we're, we've tried to investigate whether we could actually put that full detail on every billing. It might not be possible to do that, so would entail some other means of communicating that information to customers, like a separate notice or letter, which would involve a lot more work.
Yeah.
The direction that I think might be an option would, to do that for the customers who are currently set up with email, then there'd be no extra cost in postage or handling. Or, and, and another option would be to have a little web-based tool, a website that could enter their consumption and figure it out for themselves.
So you've answered my question. That was the concern because we're sitting here this evening deciding on 12 or 24, but 12 might not even be relevant because by the time it gets up and running, we might already be into 18 months of mock billing. Should we decide to use 12 as an option? Am I about right?
If you're not able to formulate the mock billing, you can't formulate a bill either than using that?
Well, a true billing you could do if, if the bylaw was passed accordingly, but that'd be possible, that'd be a more feasible option than a direct automatic that starts, let's say, once the bylaw is in place.
Yes, it would actually be a lot easier to implement an actual billing than a mock billing.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. Through you, to staff, we have been receiving our utility bills with the consumption, the meter readings on it. So how long have we been getting that? Has it been for the all of 2017?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, this being, I, I'm not sure of the exact date, but we do have data on a full year's worth of billing. So for sure, since the October of 2016 bill, sorry, December of 2016 billing to the October of 2017 billing, which is a full one-year billing cycle.
This is a, as a follow-up. So, we all can go back to our last, for a full year, and know what our consumption was. And I still think that the, that, that there's no need for a, a mock billing period. I think that's just, from what I'm hearing, it's just additional money that's going to be put out for, for what?
Time.
We promised the community a mock billing.
We did promise the community a mock billing.
And so I was going to say, in an election year, what good is your promise?
I don't, I don't disagree with you. But the thing is, is that that promise was made three years ago or four years ago.
Your promise is expiring, isn't it?
I think that the...
You're arguing a resolution that disengages all...
I know, but we haven't voted on, on the, on the, on the 12 or 24 months. And I'm just saying, I can't support either one because I think we need to proceed. And that's what I am hearing from people that talk to me. Get on with it. You stalled, you've been dragging your feet, what's the point? Let's move forward.
I like your recommendation from staff, so to our manager of operations, based on what our chief financial officer just gave us as factual information. Try some more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that we suggested not only a mock billing, but maybe even an extended mock billing was the fact that there was the rebalancing. We're going to take some of the current revenue from the 1,700-plus residents and we're going to change it and, and book more balance on the 290. So there could possibly be some significant increases for some of our non-residential users, which would probably have more of a bigger effect than the residents looking at their, their mock bill. But just having awareness and giving our non-residential water users a bit of time to adjust was, was more the reason for us to look at even extending it a little bit.
But having said that, the mock billing, the flat rate is definitely either way. It's a win-win for the corporation because you've got a stable revenue source if you stay at a flat rate for two years. We're definitely guaranteed stability.
We're, yes, we're, we're definitely guaranteed stability. We reviewed all the different rates for our revenue requirements and considered all that and we wanted to make it fair and equitable for everyone. It did show us that we were putting a little bit more emphasis on residential and it was maybe fair, but there, there could be some significant increases to non-residential.
Okay. Counselor Tripp and then Counselor Hammond?
Oh, I've had my arm up for a second.
Well, I didn't see it, okay, so then Counselor Butler up to Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, I, just, just respond to the desire to, you know, quote-unquote, get on with it. I, I just really believe that, you know, if you're telling the community something, you need to be faithful to carry that out. And so we have to decide at least on the 12 to 24 a month thing that we've been given here. And I, I just don't think that you can tell people all of a sudden, okay, no, we've changed our minds and, you know, what you've, what you did during the year, you're going to have to suck it up and, and just live with this. I think at least 12 months gives people a chance to try and get their water usage down. For some people, I, I don't know whether or not that's going to be possible. I mean, we, we don't know. We don't live in people's homes and we can't go making value judgments on, on how they use water and whether or not they're responsible people or not. So I just am absolutely not in favor of anything that would hurry it up beyond, or closer than at least 12 months.
Minimum of 12. But with all due respect, you also didn't have any choice in the type of rate you were...
That's right, I didn't.
So as you stated, you're...
But that was the one that...
Ah, but it does have a choice here.
Can we, can we stick to the order? Yeah. Because when we pick an order of speakers, that doesn't mean that the chair gets to rebut every speaker that goes. The chair has to wait its pick-a-line as well and that's just proper procedure.
Thank you.
This mock billing process...
For permitting that.
Sorry, you're interrupting me again.
No, thank you for interrupting me.
The, the mock billing process isn't just for the benefit of the residents, it's also for the benefit of the city. And I'm sure as a previous treasurer, you can respect that, that you don't want to have any surprises in this period. We've chosen the billing process here that is most volatile. Only 50% is based on fixed revenues. So we're not sure what we're going to see in the first year. It's nice to give it a try and to, to see where we come out. We don't want to come out with $50,000 shortfall in our water utility and have to cover it from somewhere else, like electrical. We, we just can't afford to have that type of shortfall. So to give our staff the opportunity to transition into this period is, I think, much more fair to them so that they're not burdened with having to worry about a large shortfall in finances. To give them a year to get up to speed on how this process is going to work is only fair to staff.
That's right, I agree.
Except more costly, as our chief financial officer had stated.
Why don't we get into this members, please?
So, um, yeah, and I agree, I, I've been hearing from people too, like Counselor Thompson has, that people just want to be done with the water meter issue. They're tired of hearing about it, they don't want to talk about it, they, they just want it done. But at the same time, I still think that we need to do a mock billing period. Now, either way we go, in option two or option three, chances are people are going to see a reduction, according to our stats here, because average water user is going to see a reduction. And the water conserver, who is a lower quartile, is going to see a substantial reduction in water rates. The only people that are going to see an increase are the higher water users. And that's only by about $30 based on the data that was compiled over the past year on actual water consumption.
With all due respect, you already decided what rate...
I know, but what I'm saying is, it's not going to be a surprise either way. It would be nice to be able to give people a 12-month mock billing period so that they have an opportunity, if they're in the, in the upper quartile and they aren't conserving now, it may encourage them to conserve because they have an advance notice of what their water bill is going to be when it starts to come through the following year. On the other hand, if we don't give them a mock billing period, two-thirds of the residents are going to find a reduced rate based on what we've seen over the past year. It's not going to be a disaster either way. I still ought to give people a mock billing period because that's what we said we would do and it gives them an opportunity to make their own decisions on conservation. And they don't get any surprises.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I believe we already polled the counselors, so Counselor Butler and Counselor Tripp opted not to vote on it. Counselor Butler, if I'm correct, you said Tripp did, is there a 36-month?
I think we need to have a proper motion put forward.
Well, the motion's there. Direct staff to implement the water rate mock billing process for 12 or 24 months. And we had a mover in a second.
Okay, so either, or we let staff decide, or is that the...
No.
No.
We're, we're going to direct staff to implement either 12...
So you have to make a decision and someone needs to put that motion?
Well, it is, it's all part of the same motion because it's be further, and be further resolved.
Yeah, but if we broke it up...
So you're picking 12 or 24?
Yeah, I said 12.
So it's 12, Counselor Thompson?
Because they need to recess.
You got to make a decision. I know.
We came in 2014 before the election. I'm going back, I'm sorry, I, I just...
I didn't bring my hair care in.
I'm sorry, I've got to get this done. There was going to be a mock billing period and because of an error in the advertising, we couldn't implement that. It wasn't implemented, but it was intended to be implemented.
It was lost, it was already stolen, it was all stolen.
Well, I mean, they were, the, the project was going on, it was ongoing. At any rate, I didn't make anybody any promises. I can't make a promise. I'm only one person of seven with a vote here. And I can't support...
But it was a decision of council, and you have to support a decision.
I will support a decision of council, but my preference is to have no mock billing period. That was my comment.
And Counselor Tripp, you had said it was irrelevant, and you didn't say anything, but I can have the opportunity to kick the cat when we're talking. So the speech.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad, because it really is divorced from the other one in that it is a separate motion in itself. I mean, I, you know, if, if the staff had brought forward a twenty-four a month option, I think they've done that because they do see that that could potentially be, the time that they need. I don't think otherwise, they would have probably have brought it forward. Having said that, um, the twelve-month option is there. And I mean, yeah, another twelve months. Okay, so we've had one full year of, of looking at our numbers. And if we have another full year of be, of being able to try and implement some conservation, then, you know, yeah, I, I would be willing to go with the twelve months. If the staff can get, you know, the, the information together so that they can, uh, do the proper billing at that time.
Counselor Butler. One more kick if you can. What is your choice?
No, I'm ready to vote.
You mean, you're ready to vote on what?
Uh, worship, uh, just, just for information purposes, the council's, uh, treating this as a second resolution. We do not have a motion, a mover, and a second.
But the way it's written, it's not a second resolution.
No. If we're treating it as one.
But we split, if we split it into a second. So now I need, okay, so I need a mover and a second. Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond. Okay, so now let's continue on. Twelve, zero, twelve. But Counselor Butler?
I'll leave you surprised to vote.
We have to embed it in the votes so we can vote.
Well, it's your motion. Somebody has to put forward a motion.
That the council lets staff do. You have the water rate mock billing process for.
And you're trying to fill in the gap. She's stuck in the middle.
Yeah, let's go twelve. Let's go twelve.
Okay.
That's it. The vote is on the floor.
Okay.
Second. Yeah, and Chris seconded my motion for twelve months.
Well, for a vote.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Twelve months it is?
Wow, again, to get it.
Okay, requests arising from correspondence, there's none. Information items, ten eighth.
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't.
I think it's a real.
Water meter. Downtown business, ten eighth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Subject matter is two eight thousand eight hundred B for service to Grand Forks Downtown Business Association. Recommendation is council receives the two thousand eighteen fee for service request from the Grand Forks Downtown Business Association and refers to crest to two thousand eighteen budgeting process for consideration. Mover please, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Ross, Counselor Brock. Okay. All those in favor?
Whoa.
Discussion.
I just want to. No, I'd like to amend the motion.
Oh, okay.
Um, I would, um, refund this to the twenty-eighteen, um, budget process, and it will be considered only with a budget proposal for how the funding is going to be used.
That would be brought up during the twenty-eighteen. I don't think that would be a given.
We're just receiving this application.
Yeah, you're just receiving it, and we're just referring it already. We're referring it twice on budgeting.
I guess my concern was that the other organizations that have made the request have provided their budgets.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. So they need to get us a budget before we go into the twenty-eighteen.
We're not approving anything.
Yeah, we're not approving anything.
Okay.
We're just receiving it and then referring it directly.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Butler?
So it's been my experience in previous years when we've looked at these things. It's supposed to be the procedure that these organizations come forward with their previous year's financials, as well as their budget for the upcoming year. And they have a nice slideshow presentation, and they show us what they're gonna do. And we've had really professional presentations from the gallery and from the museum. And when this came forward last time, I had asked staff to provoke, to ask this association for at least their financials to come to this agenda. So I'm confused as to why it hasn't. By the time it gets to the budget process and it's included in our budget, it's too late to pull it out. I mean, you can, but by that point, staff doesn't like to pull things out of the budget. That's why they apply in September and in October, so that we have a chance to review their plans. By the time we get into January, we're too far down the road. It's supposed to be done in the fall.
Okay, if we don't get anything before we actually look at including it in the budget, then pretty much figure that it's not gonna get included in the check.
So why do all the other organizations have to come here in September, which is what our policy says, and provide us all their information in September? It's not fair to them that they've supplied professional presentations and, well, they're.
Because there's an ongoing, and they. Doesn't get the expectation to do with the five ones that have anything to do with the fiscal year.
That's got their own, um, so that they can apply.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a fiscal year scenario, so I'm sure this has a lot to do with it because they've only started now with the DVA.
Yeah.
So I'm sure this has a lot impact there. The other ones are already established with their fiscal year.
Yeah.
And this is why, but this is just a startup.
Statements.
Yeah, exactly. So it's also, as the, as the recommendation reads, the process in the budget for consideration.
Yeah.
Only for consideration, should they not be able to own up to what their responsibility is?
Okay.
Then it will be rejected. And I fully expect that if they don't, then, yeah.
Okay, so two questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Butler.
So my first question then to staff is, we had asked for them to provide financials. Was that communicated to them, and why didn't they provide it? Um, second question, when will this come back again on our agenda for consideration and for us to review whatever budget that they might have provided? And how will that look on our agenda?
My worship, we can, uh, we can communicate with the DVA and, and just find out on their intentions. I know that, um, this is kind of a new cycle for them. Uh, we just finished the, uh, twenty-seventeen funding for them, so I'm sure that they're, they're just kind of getting their ducks in their row. But we can, uh, just have a contact with them, and I can talk to them to find out exactly what it is. And, uh, you know, council's looking for a presentation pre-budget. And, uh, they also have to give their, their financial ask at the same time, so we can, we can check into that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Receiving, is this is just?
Yeah, for receiving, yeah.
What's the motion exactly? Just to receive for information?
And refer. And refer.
Yeah.
The request to the budgeting for consideration.
Somebody whistle?
Yeah, I heard somebody.
Grass.
Oh, oh, was that you?
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, I thought we already did. Anyone opposed? Carry.
I'm opposed.
Okay, well, it would be nice to speak up while I'm asking the question.
It'd be nice if people weren't whistling while we're asking the question.
All right, item ten B memo, water meter complaint, manager of operations. Recommendation is council receives for information and discussion a memorandum from the manager of operations regarding a water meter complaint. Mover please. Counselor Hammond, secondary, Counselor Tripp. Discussion, Counselor Butler.
It's my understanding, I could be wrong, but I thought when on the gardens had their water meters installed, that they had them wrapped with heat tape. Did that happen?
On the gardens?
Sorry, um, triangle gardens. The trailer park.
I don't think so.
Uh, three, Mr. Mayor, the, um, correspondence or the contract requirements were put through the correspondence, uh, in the email chain below, but it was basically, uh, they were, the homeowner was in charge of, um, keeping the meters from freezing or insulating or that's like that.
I think the simple way to put it, anything that wants on the homeowner's property is their responsibility to safeguard against any damage, et cetera.
Sorry, that wasn't my question. My question was, do triangle gardens have their water meters wrapped?
No.
Or insulated?
Are you asking if the city did that under the contract?
If the installer, if the contractor, yeah.
Not as per the contract.
No.
But they did.
I'm sure some of them did, or all of them did on their own, but.
On their own. It wasn't by the contractor.
Wasn't in contract.
No. Because there was a one problem there too, and apparently it seemed the same way they had to make it on their own. If memory serves me right, in Triangle Gardens. And Counselor Tripp?
And again, I mean, I, you know, I can understand why this resident, um, is upset that his, um, pipes froze when he'd been living in that trailer for, you know, however many years, not having had a water meter and never having that issue. And, you know, we do know that this has been a very contentious issue for the community, and, and whether or not it sets a precedent for eighty-some odd bucks, I just think, you know, pay the guy and be done with it.
Worship?
Counselor Thompson, I'm gonna comment on that.
You've got to get turned off.
For information.
I thought it is.
Um, I can't support that. That's setting a dangerous precedent.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, no, um, I think it's been clearly outlined what the responsibilities are, and, uh, um, uh, Mr. Haluk may not like it, but that's unfortunate.
And just to echo one further, council made a resolution in the past that we were not gonna discuss anything regarding water meters. If memory serves me right, on this.
That's ridiculous, worship.
Yeah.
Well, be it as it may, it was a resolution of council.
Then we shouldn't have set our water rates, because we had to. We had to set it or something else.
Okay, I'm gonna, well, okay, then I'm gonna call this question last. Okay, Counselor Ross, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to talk about communication because was it clear to people how they had to, if they're living in a manufactured home or a trailer, um, once something is augmented? And was it clearly communicated through the newspaper or a mail-out that they had to, uh, take, um, proper precautions so that their outdoor pipes wouldn't freeze because they've been augmented by the installation of something? Then I'm not gonna say. But I communicate, 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 communicate. When I ran for council, and this was a major issue, I realized that people weren't, weren't either listening or reading or hearing because I thought it was all really clear.
That's laid out.
It, okay, so Jess, can you answer that question? Was that made clear to these people?
No.
Folks?
Yes, that was made very clear. Um, they were given a single-page, um, message, I guess, on what their responsibility is, was against freezing. And they were asked to sign it and return.
And that comment regarding, if I may, unless I'm wrong, a comment regarding that prior to a water meter, the water never froze. But a water meter does have a certain amount of restrictive factors, only so many GPM which will reduce the flow. Which is a possibility if it was hyped for crossloads, it could freeze, unless it's protected.
But not everybody has.
Speaking from the industry.
I don't, I have problems, you know, I have to deal with, and I don't.
Because if you slow the flow down, it's gonna freeze faster than.
So then could he say, thanks very much, I don't want the water meter?
Nope.
Nope, nope. Asked, he was informed, so the question was answered, asked and answered. All those in favor?
Of what, receiving this?
Yes, yep. Anyone opposed? All right, next one. Motion to receive.
Yeah.
Regarding information, the memorandum from engineering and planning regarding the November open house summary. Counselor Ross, Counselor Brock. Discussion, Counselor Butler.
So it seems in the stats that we've gotten back that the public strongly wanted us to implement the reception program on the areas that aren't hearing that. So is that something that's gonna come back on a further agenda? Or do we make a motion or notice a motion now? How, how would staff like to see that received?
Anybody? Yep. Go ahead.
Mr. Gates. We are intending, uh, intending agenda approval to bring the garbage bylaw to the December eleven, maybe the whole, for discussion.
What was that, December eleven? The next. A garbage bylaw?
Okay, recede for information.
Merry Christmas.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
We could do sewers.
Have no bylaws, no need. Please, move on to the questions from public and media. And again, same old routine. Please stay on the subject matter of the agenda, please. The gentleman in the, we call it the second room.
Me?
Yourself, sir.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. My name is Gary Jarvis, and I'm obviously a resident here. And I just wanted to bring up two items, and it's on water meters. What else tonight? Um, two comments. One, um, I'm a large user. No problem, I have no problem paying for it myself. We've been going through this hassle for four years. Council, keep up your word. You said you'd give us at least a twelve-month mock billing period. You voted for that. I don't see where you approved any rates tonight. Are you approving the fifty-six cent additional rate? Is that what you're doing? Over and above the base rate? I'm confused.
That's part of the mock billing.
That's right. That's part of the mock billing.
It was option two. It was on the agenda from the previous meeting, and what exactly those numbers were.
But you never mentioned that rate. So is it that rate, that fifty-six cents a cubic meter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fixed, it was a fixed rate.
Well, there was a base rate plus a fifty-six cents a cubic meter over the base rate. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the one issue. Uh, that's fine. Obviously, that fifty-six cents is based on a cost of a dollar and eleven cents because you're trying to make this revenue neutral, I'm under, my understanding. That's what the whole project started at. Am I correct? Okay, so that fifty-six cents is, is the difference between the fixed rate and the, uh, uh, what the average is to get it up to cover the costs of running the water. How happy is the council with a dollar and eleven cents used to produce a cubic meter of water? Could I see where those numbers come from? Big? That's just higher than most other communities.
That's a good question.
Okay, because that's, that's what your base rate is. That's what you're billing the fifty-six cents on. Is that dollar eleven less, less the, less the, uh, average, uh, fixed rate than I want to get?
You, you, just quickly, before manager replies to that, you said it's higher than?
It's higher than other communities.
Okay, are you comparing other communities that do not use a mechanical system to get the water out of the ground, which entails other costs other than just?
I, I can't answer that question. That's why I'm asking.
Well, that's very relevant.
And it is, it absolutely is. That's why I'm asking for the formula. If I knew what, how that rate was calculated, then I can determine whether the dollar and eleven cents. I don't know what we've got included in that dollar and eleven cents. Is it just for the water? Or is it, there's some sewer factors in there too? I live in Johnson Flats. I have no sewer. I will never have sewer down there. Fifty or sixty residents down there, bunch and ruckle. We should never see a bill that has recycling water for sewer. We shouldn't be part of that because we can't access that. So if you're throwing costs in there that involve sewer in that dollar and eleven cents, it doesn't do me any good. I'm paying for something I'm never gonna use. cents, it doesn't do me any good, I'm paying for something I'm never going to use. That's, I'm just asking for the formula and we've got a year to worry about this and work through it, okay? I'm just asking for the formulas, how that dollar and eleven cents was established because that's what, that's your yardstick, that's where you've stuck the pin in the wall, because it's about eleven cents.
Before you start, my apologies for interceding to you.
Okay, so that's one question and I'm not, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, I'm just asking, going forward, I'd like to see...
We can give you the overall view of it. It was based on the revenue requirement divided by the amount of water produced.
But strictly the water produced, not returns or, I mean, how many staff are in there, how many staff are involved in that other than the three guys that do water? I mean, is there, how many trucks are involved in there that don't do just water? I mean, it's pretty easy to stick a pin in the wall, say it's a dollar and eleven cents, I'm going to sneak in an extra fifteen cents here that is for something else over here, but nobody will ever see it. It's easy to do, I used to do it, that's how I know. So that's one question, is that formula, that dollar and eleven cents, because that's the benchmark. I'd like to see where that comes from. The other issue is, you've looked at three separate items on here, but the very best item that I've seen, looking at these, is the formula that Summerland uses. Now, I don't know what the instructions were to urban systems when they put this package together because I didn't see it until last week. I don't know what their instructions were.
I don't know either.
I would like to know what the instructions were, I can guess because of the three scenarios that came there. The very best scenario that I've seen in the whole Okanagan is the one that Summerland uses, which allocates water based on the size of your property, okay? A base rate plus, it's a user pay system, absolutely no question, the bigger yards pay more money, no doubt about it.
But it's a flat rate?
It's a small flat rate and the user pay for the rest until you get up to, what they've done is they've said, look, we know people in the Okanagan like to grow gardens, they like to have lawns, they have fruit trees, so we're going to assume that if you have a half-acre yard, let's take an acre, forty-five thousand square feet roughly, we're going to assume that seventy percent of that is either garden, lawn, or fruit trees, the rest is house and driveway. So how much water do you need to service a house, or sorry, to service that green area, lawn, and garden? Seventy percent of it, let's say it's thirty thousand square feet, just for using numbers that I'm throwing out. You get an allocation of the number of water, or sorry, and it's a monthly allocation, you get an allocation of that water at a relatively low rate, in this case thirty-seven cents a cubic meter as opposed to our fifty-six cents proposed. What they do is they say, but if you get over what we think you need to grow reasonable, and they establish this, then you go from thirty-seven cents to a buck forty-two a cubic meter. So, but you get, you get during the summer, once you get enough to deal with your lawn, your garden, and your fruit trees. The interesting part of this whole thing is, that software to do that billing is currently available, absolutely free of charge from your current software supplier, Vatten Software. They will give it to, they will give it to the city.
Question I have for you, sir, is, okay, you had mentioned Summerland as your model. How long have they been using this?
They put it in in 2015.
So it's already been in operation almost two years?
Yes.
Okay.
And it seems to work from what I'm told.
No, the reason I ask that is because what the basis and the foundation is because once we implement ours, we are still able to do different areas and tweak it should be necessary, which is what our consultants from Urban Systems said, it's something that can always be tweaked and modified. It's not written in stone.
What I'm suggesting is that we maybe look at something like that because at least it gives people the opportunity with the big yards to have enough water at a reasonable rate to look after their garden, their fruit trees, and their lawn. And it becomes very penalizing if you get over the base rate.
But that's what urban systems try to avoid, that we don't use a punitive system and that's a very severe punitive system, so.
I went through...
It's an incentive.
Pardon me?
I said it's not punitive, it's an incentive.
Well, to urban systems, when you penalize people, that's not an incentive, you don't use that approach.
But as I say, I don't know, obviously, the rate is going to dictate a whole lot of things for large users like me and I've had deans been on my place and so has a couple of other guys on the water meter issues and so on, but I don't want to see us turn, what Summerland tried to do is make sure they kept the city green. They didn't let everybody run around, turn the water off.
Exactly.
So if you look on their website, this information is all there and as I say, the software is available through Vatten at no charge, they will just give it to you. It does take some work from the city to establish the size of their buddy's yard, but that's a one-shot deal.
But you can get that through the tax station?
Absolutely, you can. The other thing is, let's look at the dollar and eleven cents, is that a real good number? I don't know because I'm not in the, I'm not in the water business. So those are a couple of items that I think the council should look at before you finalize all of this and go through, went through October of 2014.
To our manager of operations, what I remember when the consultants were here, they don't do a comparative pretty much around the Okanagan, probably including Summerland, whether or not they did it?
I don't think, Mr. Mayor, that Urban Systems did the Summerland project, I think it was in that house.
No, I didn't say they did the project, they put their study together.
I don't know.
That they looked at other communities, I'm sure they did.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a simple task to compile water rates and the different structures and that and then today we were hoping just to fix on a rate structure and work with the different options within that. We did ask, you know, Urban Systems what was used in similar areas and it's very hard, like you stated, Mr. Mayor, there's different water systems, different requirements, different, a lot of different things that come into play.
Definitely, which impacts the costs.
Correct. So we, we came to council, we put out some options and we tried to take the feedback and tried to formulate a couple of different options, the rate structure, and if there's further options that council wants us to look into within the rate structure that was chosen, then we're happy to try to accommodate best we can.
We're still early in the game because especially now, we've implemented a mock billing again, so we're still early in the game.
Now's the time to do it, don't, don't get the year down the road and get everybody flaps up and...
Let's get them, thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely worth looking into, but there are always going to be anomalies. I have five acres, less than a quarter acre is brown lawn, there are no fruit trees, there are no gardens, it's, it's land.
This system would work, this system would work extremely well for you, I mean...
Oh, yeah, I'd get way more water, I think.
But, and it's revenue neutral to them is my understanding.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's the same instructions I'm sure that Urban Systems had here, was make it revenue neutral, that's what we were told four years ago, it's not a money-making project, it's not supposed to be.
Well, isn't it supposed to make sure we have enough revenue to do, to cover some of our places? It's not revenue neutral completely.
Well, that's where...
That's where that fifteen cents you're talking about.
Well, that's exactly right, council or my Ross, that's when, when you hit that one point one one cents per cubic meter, you know, what have we got in that number?
Yeah, I mean, it's just good, it's good management in any scenario to make sure we put some money aside to replace...
That's right, but that should be in the capital budget.
But we have to feed our capital budgets.
Yes, you do, so you've got to go, but don't start, you only have to do this once and it'll carry forward, but let's do it right at the first line rather than sort of a piecemeal approach and, you know, we're going to have half the people mad and half the people happy, let's see if we can get most of the people happy.
Yeah, I think this sounds like sort of a creative solution, something that hasn't been presented and that hadn't maybe even been thought of before, but it satisfies, I mean, that's my fear, is that people, if they feel, oh, man, you know, I'm going to have to pay more for my water and so I'm just going to let everything go brown. And this is not what this community is about, this is, this is not our values even.
No.
And I, and, you know, and I'm not trying to appeal, you know, through emotions and everything, but, but that people are in this valley, living in this valley, many of them because they want a garden, they, they, they enjoy the, you know, keeping things green, they want trees, they, they want the fruit and...
Especially for seniors, it's so good for their health to get outside and to have activity and it's something that they love.
And, and, and maybe this, you know, exploring this might be something that, that could satisfy...
And it's not, and it's not something that we have to build from the ground up, as I say, Vatten will give, will give the city the software, no charge.
Well, thank you for that information. I'm sure it's been acknowledged to the lady in the second row.
Gloria, this sounds like a very good idea to explore. Previously, I know of several people who talked about removing not gardening and one particular person stated that if this thing went through, he was an elderly gentleman who had maybe ten, twelve fruit trees, apple trees, beautiful trees, not dwarf ones, the old standard kind, produced very well, he said, you know, he just assumed cut them down. That's the kind of sentiment and despair people felt and feel when, when this kind of thing came along because they couldn't, he didn't feel he could maybe afford to deal with this water rate raise. So, but this is a very good, these people in Summerland...
With today's technology, you could use trickle irrigation like that.
Not necessarily.
But that's, we're getting into an area now, so they let some guys add about hacking down his trees, it's been known.
No, but that's the kind of sentiment that was out there and is out there for some people.
But now we're going to see...
That messes up your, that changes your garden community and gardening ideas here.
Well, I had somebody say that too and he hasn't pruned his trees for about ten years, so, I don't know, he doesn't really care about his trees and it's true to his own prune them.
I like that approach, I like that innovative ideas coming for you, that's good.
Well, it was brought up, Mr. Mayor, it was brought up pretty close to home to me. My next-door neighbor had an issue and he put in about eight thousand square feet of river rock. There's an individual, I don't know where they are, on Seventy-second Avenue that put in about five thousand fair square feet of rock. The places both look like they came out of Aleppo.
Yeah.
Really, they do.
Death escaping, I call it.
Yeah, exactly.
That's your escaping.
And I'll tell you what, my grandkids have a hell of a time playing bocce ball on that gravel.
And it's really hard on the lawn mower.
And it's really tough on the lawn.
Yeah.
It's great for roundup though, because once the weeds start growing, you can get out there with your chemicals and just... Sometimes they put, they put ground...
Gentleman in the, I would call it the fourth row.
Trent Scott. Yeah, you were mentioning that, it's been three years pretty soon since I brought up that if our building was called by a different name, our water bill would be between five and six thousand dollars a year less. And you've mentioned a few times that things can be tweaked, why hasn't there been some tweaks made to correct that unfairness?
Good question. Financial officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I don't know that I can discuss the past, but I can discuss what we do have plans for in the future and the very near future.
The near future with mock billing?
No, 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 long before the mock billing because we do need to bring a new fees and charges by law and for water sewer rates, which I was actually hoping to introduce at the next committee of the whole. It might end up being January, considering that I have two days to prepare for, but the plan is to address it then. So regardless of how the mock billing turns out, there will be new fees and charges files for the water and sewer rates and it will address it.
Yeah, like, this, that mock billing, I don't understand because like you've had the water meters readings for a year, you've had our water meter readings for fourteen years and I guess if people were smart, they'd all turn their tap on for a year and then shut them off.
Yeah.
Caused quite a shortfall to the city. And the one thing I would like to mention too, like I've been complaining about this for some time, but the people that have been treated unfairly, I'm in the minority because most of them aren't complaining because I live in a fifty-five-plus building and most of them are dead, so I hope this problem will be fixed while they're still alive. Because this, this went on for many, many years before I brought it to the city's attention.
Les Johnson, I'm a resident of the city, but we're not on your water system, we're on Cion and I'm not the one who pays the bill, but I'm, I'm given to understand that they use the same system.
They do.
How big is your lot, that's how we figure out how much you owe. And they were right across the road from here, maybe you could consult with them rather than have you to talk to Summerland. That's one point. And the other thing is, congratulations on Ashley making some decisions, some I really liked, but you actually made some finally. And the one that I like is that you didn't try to make the mock billing period so long that the new incoming council, because you won't all be there, will just muck with it because they want to, because remember what happened when you guys came in, I mean, really. Plans that extend past an election usually don't work out that well.
Good point.
Yeah, and final thing, and it really is just an observation, the conversations I've heard talking about the issues we have here with people who are homeless and mentally ill and drug addicted and thieving, et cetera, et cetera, and there's all these people who want something done and there's all these people within various organizations and government levels who agonize over what to do and what can we do because of their strictures on us and everything else. I'm not sure how many people watch Sixty Minutes here, but yesterday, Sixty Minutes had a piece from Puerto Rico. The, the thing with Puerto Rico is that, that who's feeding the people in Puerto Rico? It turns out that a restaurateur, a cook, a very famous one, came down to Puerto Rico right after the whole thing fell apart and he just started feeding people. He didn't ask anybody's permission, he didn't go and apply for this and go through the red tape because that was a problem. He just started figuring out, where's the food, because the companies who actually sell the food had diesel to keep the food in the warehouses frozen or cool, so it didn't go bad, so there was food there. But what was FEMA doing? FEMA was talking about MREs. This guy's actually cooking meals and in the last three months, he's cooked 2.1 million meals for Puerto Ricans, good wholesome meals, and it's cheaper than what FEMA was going to do, but see, FEMA couldn't talk to him, really, they, they eventually did, but the thing with FEMA is, it's like, just like you guys, you want to do something, there's got to be, three companies have to bid on it and we have to decide on it and that really doesn't work when people are starting. So this issue with the homeless and everything else, I wish you luck, but based on what I can see of the way that things like this get fixed by governments, they don't get fixed by governments. It's, you try things and you do, hopefully you do your best and everything else, but it just gets kicked on down the road because you can't solve that problem, it's a bigger problem than you've got. We really need, maybe not a white knight or a billionaire, but, but, you know...
Never said we're going to...
Individuals who can actually get up off their butts and just do things and then you guys can support them. That's it, my observation. Congratulations on making some...
Here ain't no other questions, I have a question to mention, counsel Ross. All those in favor?